Should we go ahead?
Yeah.
Should we?
Ten or two?
Okay. Got you, sure. Okay, ready? Okay. Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Yamhill County Board of Commissioners's formal session for December 1st, 2016. And Stephanie, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This is the time we have set aside for invocation, and joining us this morning is Pastor Matthew Dodd, who is the Campus Pastor at Calvary Chapel Worship Center in Hillsborough. He has lived in Oregon for over 11 years, and we are happy to say that he is the dad of one of our Yamhill County teen, Mikaeli Frye, over here. Pastor Dodd, thank you for joining us, we appreciate it.
It's an honor to be here. Thank you so much for inviting me to give the prayer. Will you please join me as we pray? Father, we thank you so much for this privilege to come to you right now, and we realize there is so much to do today. And we look to you for wisdom, we look to you for grace, we look to you for unity, Father God, that what needs to be accomplished here by the council, Father, in this community, in this county, would be guided by your hand. As we pray for that wisdom from you, we pray, Father God, for discernment as to what's best, not only for the community, but for the individuals within it. Please direct the steps, please give grace, please reign, and please be glorified through it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor, appreciate it. And thank you for Mikaeli, we have been enjoying her, and she does a great job.
You've done a good job.
It's a blessing for us to have her work with you all. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Don't believe anything she says about us. Thank you, Pastor. All right, this is the time we have set aside for public comment. And this is a 30-minute time period that we have reserved for public comment on any topic other than quasi judicial land use matters or another topic scheduled for a public hearing. Unless extended or restricted by the Chair or the majority of the board, the public comment will be limited to three minutes per person. And we have joining us this morning, Mr. David Wall. Mr. Wall, would you join us at the table and state your name and address for the record, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning. My name is David S. Wall. I have two addresses, one is a P.O. box, I'm not certain which one you want, or the physical address, so you'll have to be clear.
Whatever works for you.
P.O. box 756 Newburgh, Oregon, 97132. The purpose of my appearance here today is, one, is the introduction. My wife and I are retired people from San Jose, California, and we have purchased property up here, we've just paid our taxes, so we are paid up in the guilt. There's a couple of issues associated with land use process. One, we have experienced a material defect in notice where an applicant's used adjoining properties for their specific purposes. The purposes would not be fair to elaborate today because all the parties to this appeal are not present, but the material defect in notice is at issue. Second is issue is whether or not applicants for a permit have to be truthful and complete with their documents. It's my position that elected folks and all other citizens have a reasonable expectation that an applicant is truthful and complete with their application. I contend that there will be show, material defects in the truth on an application for a specific land use issue. Lastly, even though it's your next agenda item, but what I'm going to talk about is not included in your next agenda item, is the necessity to start a discussion, a financial discussion, on how to annuitize police and fire forces, so as not to create problems with your general fund over time. This type of annuitization is a significant financial step to recruit and retain qualified people that save us from a variety of ails, and to ensure that they have well-funded retirements and well-funded promotional opportunities within their specific departments and jurisdictions. With that, I'd like to thank you all for your time, and seeing the number of people behind me today, you're going to earn your money.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. We'll look forward to hearing what you have to say about your suggestions. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda, Item B-1, Item B. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion to approve Item B, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. Onto Item C, Old Business, C-1, the consideration of adoption of the final written decision, findings, and conditions of planning docket FT-01-16, an appeal of the Planning Director's approval of a forest template dwelling applicant, Bill Blair. Mr. Sadler?
Madam Chair, that's the written board order and findings and conditions that were delivered to you a couple of days ago, that you voted to approve in November.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve Item C-1?
So moved.
All right. Motion to approve Item C-1, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. Onto Item D-1, the consideration of approval of a contract employee agreement between Yamhill County Public Works Department, the Board of Commissioners, and Elliot Rector for Co. Orchard Sewer District, maintenance and operations effective through June 30th, 2017.
Madam Chair, this is a contract employee agreement for some backup services that Mr. Rector has agreed to perform that we need out there in the event the regular maintenance employee is on leave or unavailable.
Do we have a motion to approve Item D-1?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve Item D-1, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Onto Item D-2, the consideration of approval of a contract between Yamhill County Jail and Westlaw, a Thomson Reuters business for correctional online legal research services effective once fully executed.
Madam Chair, this would replace the prior agreement that the jail had with LexisNexis to provide online legal research services for inmates. So this will involve the installation of a, well, replacement of the existing terminal that's in the jail now, and then the inmates will have access exclusively to just the Westlaw materials in the jail, and we've been working with Westlaw to make sure that there's no unintended access to the Internet beyond what is necessary to access these research services.
Right.
And it's at a lower price than their previous contract, so that's a good cost savings for the jail there as well.
It's always a good thing. Do we have a motion to approve Item D-2?
Madam Chair, I would like to move to approve D-2.
Motion to approve Item D-2, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. Onto Item D-3, consideration of approval of a lease agreement between Yamhill County Health and Human Services and Mark and Julie Bearely for the purchase of the property located at 345 Northeast Sixth Street and 621 Northeast Davis Street in Menville, 97128, effective December 1st, 2016, through November 30th, 2019.
So, yeah, quick clarification, there's a couple of different things that the board is considering this morning. One is to give the final approval to the purchase of the property from the Bearely's. I forwarded you the closing documents, we're ready to move ahead with that purchase. The closing is set to fund today if we get the necessary approval and signatures. Following on from that is the lease agreement. Mr. Bearely has asked to continue to lease the current office space that he is in for a minimum of three years with a couple of one-year options, so that's the second item. And then the third is asking for your approval to an assignment and assumption agreement. We're going to assume the lease obligations that currently exist between Mr. Bearely and Lutheran Community Services Northwest, who is the tenant in the building that we're purchasing. That lease is currently on a month-to-month lease, and it will stay that way until such time as HHS is ready to move forward with the renovations. So there's those three separate items.
All right.
Are we combining them into this one item?
I think the only item that, so we should probably rephrase this slightly to say that it's the consideration of the approval of the purchase of the property located at 345 Northeast Sixth Street and 621 Northeast Davis, and then the approval of a lease agreement effective December 1, 2016, through November 30th, 2019, and the approval of an assignment and assumption agreement.
And we'll take that, take them as one motion, or do you want to take three separate motions?
If you prefer to take them separately, you can. I think if you do that in one motion, that's fine, too.
All right. And I'd make a motion to approve Item D-3, as amended by council. Any further discussion?
Yeah, that's good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. All right, we'll move on to our public hearings, and we'll open the public hearing, which is E-1, the Order to Abate Road Hazard per O.R.S. 368.251 at 7301 Northeast Crono Road in Yamhill, Oregon. Mr. Sadler?
Yes, Madam Chair, we distributed a packet with materials for you that I hope you all got. And I guess I would ask first if Mr. Diaz is here, this hearing was for his benefit. Mr. Diaz, are you here today? Mr. Diaz is not here. On October 18th, 2016, we delivered to Mr. Diaz by regular and certified mail an order to abate a road hazard under O.R.S. 368.251 and related statutes. And this was based on complaints from neighbors that he was blocking the road with equipment and trucks, and was storing timbers and industrial equipment and other materials in the county's right-of-way. The October 18th letter gave Mr. Diaz until midnight, October 26th, to abate the road hazard. There's also a large trailer that's in the right-of-way and is leaning over precariously. It hasn't fallen over, so I guess that's a good thing. And we had personnel from the road department go out there this week to check, to see whether he had abated, we set up this hearing because he did not abate it by October 26th, and the photographs of the current conditions are in the very back of your packets, I believe, or were just delivered separately to you. And we do have Mr. Gillie and Mr. Anderson here this morning, and perhaps it would be best to first hear from them about the conditions of the road. We had a surveyor go out and stake from the center line, there's a 40-foot wide easement on Crono Road, and a lot of the materials that we thought were in the right-of-way were in fact either fully in the right-of-way or partially in the right-of-way. And some of the complaints are that he routinely blocks the road completely and has harmed the road, and I think you're going to have some neighbors who are here this morning, and although he's not here, we could proceed without hearing from anyone. If you would like to hear from those people, I think this would be the appropriate time to do that.
All right. Well, then, let's start with Mr. Gillie and Mr. Anderson from Yamhill County Public Works. Thank you for joining us this morning. Maybe you can give us a little bit of a picture of how we got involved and how we got to today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Bill Anderson was involved from probably the onset of concerns were issued to our department, and can probably give you a little bit of a history on how we got to where we are today.
Yes, I was contacted by neighbors of Mr. Diaz to confront him about moving some of the things out of the county road right-of-way that were blocking the ditch, tearing up the ditch, causing erosion to plug up culverts of neighbors' driveways and so forth, and had had a couple of phone conversations with Mr. Diaz, and then finally went to meet him face-to-face and asked him to do a few things. Over time, I talked about giving him a couple of weeks, and then nothing ever happened, and so some of the neighbors, you know, kept asking me about, you know, what was going to happen with this.
Could you speak up a little? We have some folks in the back who can't hear.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
And these mics are super hot here, but I don't know if that one is out there, can you?
Is it on?
Well, suffice it to say that I went up yesterday and took the latest pictures and found that, and an attempt was made to move some of the things, but some of the equipment is, and trucks and semis and trailers are still straddling the ditch. We need to go up and reestablish the ditch, and that can't be done until this stuff is moved out of the way.
Thank you. Mr. Gillie?
As Mr. Anderson mentioned, we do have plans to schedule crews up there to take materials, rock, and reestablish ditches, clean out the culverts, that sort of thing. If we were to do that now, for one thing, some of the equipment is in the way, physically in the way. Some of it, although it might not be in the way, would be stranded by our ditch, and to get it out, you'd have to drag it across our ditch and destroy what work we've done. So it really needs to be moved out of the way so we can move on with our operations. Any kind of operation like that this time of year is highly weather-dependent, so although we have it scheduled, Mother Nature may move our schedule, and we'll just have to kind of play it by ear, and as weather allows, we'll move in. We should have, you know, a few days, a few weeks of reasonable weather that we could get in there and get it done, and we'll be responsive to that as soon as we have a cleared right-of-way and can move forward on that.
Mr. Gillie, were you planning on doing this work, or is any of this equipment the reason for you having to do any kind of work up there?
Yes and no. I mean, Crono Road is a dead-end gravel county road, and, you know, for years, it's been pretty successful as a one-lane gravel road. Recent activity has required that it be wider, I mean, that's why we're hearing signs of people running through the ditches and plugging culverts and whatnot. It's, as a one-lane road, it's really not an industrial kind of situation. We need a wider road out there, and we are willing to do that, but we need a clear right-of-way in order to get in there and do it.
Thank you. Questions?
And just for the record, the county has had survey done in preparation for this already.
That is correct.
A number of weeks ago.
Yes. So we have monuments in place, the right-of-way is clearly marked, and so we can do that...
So we're basically waiting for one thing.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. Should we at this point hear from the neighbors? Is the appetite of the board to hear from the neighbors, or do the pictures and the written testimony give you information? What is your, what's the consensus?
I think since the neighbors took the time to come here and have submitted a desire to speak, I would certainly like to hear what they have to say about this.
All right. So let's start with Dan Nikomias. Did I, is that close?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. I'm Dan Nikomias, I live at 7725 Northeast Crono Road with my wife, Lois Claus, also speaking on her behalf, she was unable to attend. You're going to see a presentation later from some of our neighbors with a lot of pictures, and I concur in full with what they're going to show you. Briefly, I'd like to add a couple of anecdotal pieces. The first is on October 28th, I was leaving my home for an appointment. I live at the very far end of Crono Road, well below the issue that we're having, and was coming up the road, and the road was blocked by a semi with a jackknife trailer. It was stuck across the middle of our road, and our road was completely impassable for 40 minutes. I believe the Sheriff's Department was called, they came out, but they arrived quite a bit after he was finally able to get the, Mr. Diaz was able to get the semi off the road. Needless to say, I missed my appointment, it was something I could reschedule, but it was quite a nuisance, and if someone at the end of our road had been in any kind of medical emergency, it would have been a very significant issue. The road was impassable, there's only one way in and one way out of Crono. Another instance that I'd like to talk about was, two weeks prior to that, not long after Mr. Diaz had submitted an application to widen the road, I was off to another appointment, and I reached the crest of the hill, and there was a car parked in the middle of the road, and Mr. Diaz was standing next to the car. He waved at me and walked down to me and started talking to me and said, "Can you get by my car?", and took a picture of me in my car, my car blocked by his car, and I said, "No, I cannot get by your car." I don't know what exactly he was trying to prove, but he proceeded to have a 15-minute conversation with me, with the road blocked, while I needed to get somewhere. I don't think that I felt physically threatened, but it was a rather uncomfortable and forcibly imposed situation. And then the last thing I...
What was the date on that?
I believe it was the 14th, but I can get you the exact...
October, November?
October, sorry.
Okay.
One other thing I'd like to add, that's sort of aside from all the right-of-way issues, that I think that our neighbors will show you some pictures of, is that there is a significant amount of materials on Mr. Diaz's property that are hazardous and uncontained, whether it's...
So, yeah, we probably need to limit this testimony to the road hazard abating, which is the purpose of the public hearing. I believe some notices regarding the solid waste have gone out, so there should be opportunities at a later time to talk about that.
That's all I have, thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Thank you. Norm Smith? If you'd state your name and address for the record, please?
I am Norman Smith, live on Crono Road at the very end, and we have a presentation for you.
Okay. Do you want to... Could you give us your address, sir?
7850 Northeast Crono Road.
Thank you.
Those are the residents of Crono Road. Should we read all the residents, or is that...
I don't, I don't know if that's necessary.
Okay.
Can if you want to.
The following are topics of concern for the neighbors. Complete road blockage, right-of-way parking and storage, road damage, property value degradation. Complete road blockage, Crono Road has been completely blocked numerous times during the past 11 months. Crono is a dead-end road, and residents have no other means of ingress and egress. Emergency vehicles are blocked, creating a dangerous situation. This is one example where the road was blocked for hours. Mr. Diaz repeatedly parks in muddy ditches and repeatedly gets stuck for weeks. Mr. Diaz spent 30-plus hours trying to free this, repeatedly blocking the road. Partial road blockage and right-of-way parking. Mr. Diaz continues to park vehicles in the roadway and along the roadway. These road hazards are dangerous, trailers are unstable, emergency vehicles have limited access, mail and newspaper delivery was impeded, residents were unable to get trailers passed and get deliveries for weeks. The road shoulder is muddy and steep, and there is not room for larger vehicles such as fire trucks and ambulances to get by. This trailer is unsafe, imagine if it was leaning over the road. Trailer is balanced on blocks of wood, this is unsafe. Road damage and hazards. Mr. Diaz creates a muddy roadway and unsafe environment by repeatedly filling in multiple drainage ditches and culverts along Crono Road, tracking and producing mud in the road and right-of-way, making road surface unsafe, creating unpermitted ungravelled driveways, dragging heavy equipment across the road and right-of-way, damaging the road and creating potholes, attempting to repair his damage by improperly grading the road and improperly distributing the gravel. Mr. Diaz has constructed several unpermitted driveways where a drainage ditch was previously located. These driveways have no drainage or gravel leading to erosion and mud hazard on the road. The road is used for unloading and dragging equipment, tearing up the road and right-of-way, tracking mud onto the roadway, and creating a slick and unsafe road. This is one of several culverts and ditches filled in by Mr. Diaz. Property value reduction. Property values along Crono Road have been significantly diminished due to unsightly storage of vast quantities of solid waste in the right-of-way and on the Diaz property. Willcutts Realtors performed an analysis of neighboring property and estimated the home's value was diminished by 20%. The Diaz property is Zone EF20, exclusive farm use, however, the vast majority of his purchased possessions have no farm use applications. Property value reduction. We want to thank the county for their efforts, but Crono Road is unsafe due to objects storing the right-of-way, and mud and drainage problems will only get worse. Mr. Diaz has already ignored several deadlines given by the county. We urge the county to take action to clean up the road and his property. We want nothing more than for Mr. Diaz to be a responsible neighbor and to set a good example for his children.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I might add, I have, my wife is a cancer patient, and I'm at the very end of the road, and all this blockage kind of worries me in case I have to get to the hospital quickly.
Thank you.
The blocking, even if it's only for 15, 20 minutes, it's concerning. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Kurt... Mr. Kurt Kreitzer?
Thank you. My name is Kurt Kreitzer, seventy-four thirty northeast Crono Road. I fully agree with everything that Mr. Smith just said.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nancy Farrell?
Madam Chair, you're fine. The gentleman didn't hear, so.
Oh.
Need your big broadcast channel.
Nancy Farrell, seventy-two ninety northeast Crono Road. And I agree with everything Mr. Smith said. And also, in April, I had a stroke and I am a widow. I had to call the ambulance and I'm not sure if sometimes an ambulance would be able to get through at this point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Natalia Kreitzer?
I'm Natalia Kreitzer. I live at seven-four-three-zero northeast Crono Road. And I just want to say I agree with everything that Mr. Smith just said. And also, we don't want the road widened. The road has been perfectly fine being a single little wide-lane road for all farming activities and residential activities have gone on there for years. We just want people not to store their personal possessions along the roadway.
Thank you. Wayne Stonecypher?
My name is Wayne Stonecypher. I live at seventy-four-eleven northeast Crono Road with my wife Janet. I'm the oldest resident there. I have thirty-three years plus. It's been a beautiful, pleasant little community, dead-end road there. As a little background, I grew up in the country and we learned to depend on our neighbors. Sometimes they were the first responders when police or fire or other needs were presented. And in accordance with that tradition, our neighbors were at least acquaintances if not friends. We babysat each other's kids. We looked out for them. We were the first ones to show up if they had a problem in many aspects of life. And in keeping with that, I have tried to be a good neighbor to people of Crono Road. And when Mr. Diaz moved there and his family, I welcomed them and tried to have a commodious relationship with them. And it was pretty good for the first year and then Mr. Diaz went on this eyeing spree and began collecting all kinds of equipment and apparatus. And instead of repairing his own property, adapting his own property to operate and store this equipment, he began to use the county road for a loading surface like a warehouse or a staging yard. He brought big equipment into the road, semi-tractors and trailers and so forth in a dead-end road where there was no maneuvering room to turn them around. So, he wound up using other people's property to manipulate, maneuver his equipment. That was offensive to some of the neighbors. And when they spoke to him about it, he became angry at them for their reprimand of him using the property without the permission. That escalated into some rather nasty and unsavory episodes. I have continued to try to keep a wider communication, decent relationship with Mr. Diaz. He's violated my property a number of times and even so, I've tried not to create an adversarial relationship with him, but it's been a trial. As regards the enlargement of the road, the rest of the community on the road are unanimous in not wanting the road modified other than cleaned up and his personal equipment and apparatus removed. The View, of course, my property is not what it used to be with his various motor, or mobile home, trailers, trucks, all kinds of apparatus are now part of the View. It's not near as pleasant as it used to be to live there. The road has been adequate since Elrod Acres was subdivided in nineteen oh nine. Been just fine until Mr. Diaz came and disrupted the right-of-way and began to use it for his personal use. He feels discriminated against by the county. My reply to that is, what if all of us use the road that way? None of us do. The rest of us have adapted our property for our personal possessions and use and operations. He has not, will not. On two occasions, I counseled him to that effect, expressing that he needs to create a driveway around, a loop driveway around through his property so that he can maneuver his vehicles without disrupting other people's property boundaries or the right-of-way itself. He's ignored that. I suggested that he clear out to, it's an overgrown roughly forty-year-old Christmas tree farm that he lives on. I suggested they clear out a yard down in the midst of it among the trees where he could offload and load his vehicles and so forth instead of using the road. He's ignored that. Road is continually damaged where he uses his forklifts and his tractors and tries to operate these heavy rigs up and down the hill that we live on there. So, he spins out a lot, leaves ditches in the road. They become puddles. With traffic, the puddles soon become potholes and it's an ongoing problem. It's annoying and irritating where we used to have a decent road, somewhat lacking in grading, but it's just been a gradually worsening situation. So, that's pretty much all I've got to say, other than I'm in complete accord with the presentation you had here. And again, we're not, any of us in favor. I think some of you have at least received a letter from their neighborhood rejecting the idea of enlarging the road. It's been perfectly adequate until it was abused by Mr. Diaz.
Thank you.
Like our little green rain. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roger Gronn?
Roger Gronn, seventy-one-three-one Highway two-forty. I'm a builder developer and I've built three of these houses back there. And my place extends back to Crono Road, so in a sense, I don't have a dog in this fight, I suppose, because I don't access via Crono normally. But I think two points that need to be talked about is, number one is that I think you should expect all of, all of the tenants there, all of the property owners there, to be standing down at the tax office down the hall looking for a rebate or a reduction on their property taxes. Mrs. Farrell, who I was instrumental in getting that letter put together, she's taken a hit for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and her health is not in a position where she may be forced to sell, same as where Kurt and Natasha are now. That house was sold because of a health issue. That's about the only reason anybody ever moves off of theirs. They're either too sick to stay or they die, they died, one or the other. But there's easily substantiated property tax reductions, which I mean that you guys get a little piece of this too. And there's another issue that Mr. Diaz has repeatedly said that he, not consistently, but repeatedly said he wants to use it for agricultural purposes. The problem's going to be, and I don't think he's ever checked his well, his well is about as good as most of the rest of them up there, which are really terrible. And at Lois's place, for example, they had to drill two wells to get to the minimum for financing. One of them was only three-quarters of a gallon. Wayne's well is only about gallon and a half, two gallons. When I, we did that, we put in a big cistern for that. Mrs. Farrell, we got lucky, she's got a decent well and so on. Commonly, Mr. Diaz's house was subsidized in a stance in the summertime because the first buyer of, or Dan's place is, he has a really great well, twelve gallons, which up there is exceptional. And he would run a hose up to them because their well went dry in the summertime. There's no, there is no water during the summer. There's no possibility that farm, that place is economically viable as a farm of any sort, any kind of hydroponic, and there's no way you can do anything. I don't think he's aware of that, so his, this is all, but the junkyard that's up there is, is really something. I make a specialty out of rehabbing rundown properties. Take them, clean them up, straighten them up, redo them in some manner. And I've never seen anything like this, never. It's, it's really something, but, and it needs to be addressed. It's, it's an EFU zone and it's not being used as that at all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dan Armstrong?
Commissioner's Dan Armstrong, seven thousand Crono Road. All the testimony that you've heard today is true and it's, besides being an unsightly mess, there should be some concern for the family. And I don't want to get into that. My place, you passed my place to get to his place. I have some gardens, vegetable patch in the front yard and spend some time out there. I've had the trash, the garbage man stop, ask me, UPS guy, FedEx guy, and our local mail person say, "What's going on here? This is the worst I've ever seen it." And for those delivery people, you know, they get a pretty wide perspective of the area. And so, it's a real issue here for a lot of people and it's completely unnecessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other comments on this?
Madam Chair, I wanted to say, Laura, there were some folks outside. Are there still anybody out there who wants to testify?
No, they're for the other public hearing.
Okay. All right. You may want to ask again if Mr. Diaz is here or if he's out in the lobby. I don't know.
No, I asked.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Friday, did you want to add anything?
No, no, I, I, well, I guess I will want to say something that I do have our code enforcement person here, Mike Kemper, is in the back. I don't mean to throw him under the bus, but-
Sure.
I will ask the, any of the neighbors that want to talk to Mr. Kemper about the solid waste issues, I will meet him out in the hallway just right after this.
Okay. Would you stand up, Mike, so that everyone can see? That's Mr. Kemper, so after this, you can gather out in the hallway.
And we do have an enforcement going on, on other aspects of the property, but it is proper just to talk about the road.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So, well, at this, at this point, would entertain a motion?
No one, no one else here to testify?
Apparently not.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I thought I might just give you a little bit of a recap before you begin to deliberate. Following Mr. Diaz's failure to remove the personal property from the right-of-way, we sent out a second notice noticing him of the hearing today. And under the statute, the question before the board this morning is to determine who is responsible for the existing road hazard. And we did have Public Works go out yesterday. I think some updated pictures are in your packet. There appears to have been some progress made to move the property out of the roadway and off of the right-of-way, but it appears that at least some of the vehicles, trailers, and other personal property is still in the right-of-way. So, we wanted to make that clear. If he had managed to completely abate the hazard, there would really have been no need for, for this hearing today. But as of yesterday and as far as we know today, the hazard still exists. So, that's really the decision before the board. If you find that he is responsible and you make that determination, you need to provide at least a minimum of an additional ten days for him to fully abate the road hazard. That's the minimum amount of time before any further action could be taken.
Thank you.
So, and I guess I would add that the procedure, correct me if I'm wrong, the procedure following that is that we would hire someone to go out there. We have not estimated costs for doing this, but hire someone to go out and clear the materials and the vehicles from the right-of-way and take them to a secure storage location. And then, after a report on what it took to do that, we would have another hearing to establish the costs and take further steps at that point to lien the property and to otherwise collect the costs for the removal and storage.
And Mr. Diaz would receive notice for any future hearing exactly in the same way that he was provided notice today. And we have nothing to indicate that he failed to receive the notice, so. We, he was told in the notice that he was not required to be here, so it appears that he's chosen not to appear today.
All right. Commissioner?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have a motion and before I go into the-
Close the hearing.
You can close the hearing.
Okay. So, we'll close the public hearing and move on to deliberations.
You can make the motion and then deliberate, yeah?
Sure. So, I have a motion and as, as part of the motion, kind of the background is, I've made six visits up there since October twenty-eighth to see firsthand, you know, what's come across to our desk with pictures and testimony and, and the neighbors' concerns. Because we have to remember that even though this is directed to one person, person causing some problems, that we have constituents up and down the road that, that he's diminishing their quality of life and, and potentially property values. So, in going up there, I, I saw that the pictures really don't do it justice. As bad as the pictures are, you've got to experience this thing firsthand. And it's one of the worst conditions that I've seen. And at one point, when I was up there on one of my trips, Mr. Diaz pulled over and engaged me. He popped out of his rig and come running over and shook my hand and, and we haven't had a nice conversation, but the focus of the conversation was, "Please, clean this up." He had started a process, but then he had stalled out. And the conditions that you see in the photos this morning, that Bill and Bill had provided us with, are the same conditions that I saw on November eighteenth. Because each time I've been up there, I've videoed the road to document if there'd been progress and what kind of progress there's been. I've also had a chance to, to meet some nice people there. I've had three different homeowners I've got to chat with and, you know, and just concerned people. I would be concerned, you would be concerned, if you had this kind of activity going, going on in your neighborhood. It's unfair and, and so at that, I would like to move that we find the road, that there is a road hazard that exists on Crono Road as described by staff and the testimony today. It is Mr. Diaz's responsibility. And I move that we give Mr. Diaz, I know ten days is the minimum.
Correct.
I want to be super gracious and give him fifteen days to get this cleaned up. Completely remove all possessions that are on the county right-of-way as directed by the staff, sent to a storage area. And that we clean up everything that's, that's on the right-of-way and blocking progress on that road, not only for the county, but, but for the safety of the individuals that live there.
And, and that removal would be done by the county only if he failed to remove himself within that fifteen days?
Right. But it doesn't limit itself to the county. We'd sub that out.
We're good.
We're probably not going to move it ourselves.
Right.
Right?
Agreed.
So, we have a motion to find that the road hazard exists and that Mr. Diaz has fifteen days to remove those possessions. And that the cost of the removal and storage would be collected from Mr. Diaz through a lien or some other judicial process in the future.
Accept that as part of the motion.
Yes. Yes.
Madam Chair, would you like Todd to sort of restate the motion once and for all?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And this is, this is really one of a couple of motions that we prepared ahead of time for alternative outcomes of this. So, restating the motion is, you have both stated it, that you are, would be finding that a road hazard exists on Crono Road as described by staff and that, and the neighbors, and that Mr. Diaz is responsible for it. And that as part of the same motion, Mr. Diaz be given another fifteen days, that would be to December sixteenth, to completely remove all of his possessions from the county right-of-way and that staff be directed to remove to a safe storage area any possessions of Mr. Diaz that remain in the right-of-way after that date at Mr. Diaz's expense. The cost of removal and storage to be collected from him following the hearing that I spoke of through a lien or through other judicial process.
All right. We have a motion. Any further discussion?
No.
All right. All those in favor of the- All those in favor of the motion as presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming. We appreciate that. So, do I need to close this? Do I need to close this? Okay.
Maybe wait a couple minutes.
Sure. Well, let's take a three-minute recess, if we can do that, everybody. It's 10:51.
Who's up next?
Item...
Can you reopen the formal session?
So we'll reopen the formal session for December 1st. It is 11 o'clock. And we'll move on to item E2, docket L39-16, an appeal of the planning director's approval of a property line adjustment to exchange equal amounts of property between tax lot 5509-700 and tax lot 5510-1200. The resulting parcels will remain the same size as prior to the adjustment of 29.98 and 6.74 acres respectively, and the applicant, James and Susan Ruggles. So at this time, we have...
The statement.
The, the statement.
Oh, did she do that? Oh, sorry. Call for abstentions and objections to jurisdiction.
All right. Do we have abstentions or any objections to jurisdiction? None. All right, and the statement?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Oregon law requires that persons who attend a land use hearing be advised of certain rights and duties before the hearing begins. First, with regard to the standards of approval, state law, ORS 1977635, requires that we list the applicable substantive criteria that must be met in order for the county to approve the application. The applicable standards will be listed by the county planner in a moment as part of the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the standards for approval. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue, to the Board of, Land Use Board of Appeals. Second, the raise it or waive it rule. Under Oregon law, any issue that might be raised in an appeal of the county's decision in this matter must be raised before the record of this hearing is closed. If you do not raise the issue before the record is closed, you cannot raise the issue on appeal. Third, and this is directed to the applicant, under ORS 197796, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval, again with sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. Finally, I will also note that under Oregon law, because this is the initial evidentiary hearing on this matter, any participant, that is anyone who submits oral or written testimony during this hearing, may, before the record is closed, request an opportunity to present additional evidence, argument, or testimony regarding the application. The request must be made prior to the time the chair announces that the hearing is closed.
Thank you, Mr. Sadlo.
And Madam Chair, I would just, one other thing I think is that's appropriate at this point, and it's not on our list, but it's been pointed out, if you have had any ex parte contacts, you need to state those, the substance of those communications on the record so that they can be rebutted, potentially, if they, if someone wants to rebut them. And although it's not an ex parte contact, if you did make a site visit, it's good to let everybody know at, at the beginning of the hearing whether you made a site visit.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Yeah, I have made a site visit like I do on all of these concerns that come before the Commissioners.
Okay. Commissioner?
Yes, I too have driven up on the road, and I have made site visits to both the hearings that we're going to have this morning, so.
And any ex parte communication? None? Okay. Mr. Friday?
I'll give the staff report.
Ms. Armstrong, thank you.
Thank you. The application is to reconfigure the lot line between the applicant's two parcels. After the adjustment, the property sizes will remain the same size, which are currently 29.98 acres for parcel one and 6.74 acres for parcel two. The property currently has access off of Dusty Drive, which is a private road. The application states the adjustment is to consolidate the potential vineyard land on one parcel and the home and accessory structure on the other. The surrounding area is zoned EF80 exclusive farm use, and the application needs to satisfy section 402 of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance and the Yamhill County Land Division ordinance. And that concludes the staff report.
Thank you. So at this point, the proponent's case? Could you state your names and address for the record, please?
My name is James Ruggles. My wife's name is Susan Ruggles. She's not here today. We reside at 15500 Southwest Dusty Drive, McMinnville. And this is the parcel land on the back yard on the back.
My name is Walter Gell with the firm of Hoggerberg, Rooter, Stone, Gallon, Fredericks at P.O. Box 480, McMinnville, 620 Northeast 5th Street. I thank you for the opportunity to come before the commission today, and I want to say at the outset that the applicant has no constitutional objections to the, any of the conditions set forth in the letter of approval. This, this is a simple lot line adjustment application, it's subject to the criteria set forth in the Land Division Ordinance, or four primary criteria. I want to say at the outset that in reading the appellant's points on appeal, it, it sounds like, what it feels like is that this appeal is based out of a perception that there is a splitting of property here, that, that a, some kind of partition is taking place, and that is not the case. The map that you have on the wall here is a map which discloses the entire tract owned by Mr. and Mrs. Ruggles. But if you look on tab three of the booklet that, that we provided to you, there's another county map there, which shows that, actually, that map consists of two tax lots, one being tax lot 700, and the, the eastern 285 feet of that map is tax lot 1200 from section nine. The section line goes right through that, through that tract. There is another map just in front of that, the assessor's map, that shows, and this is from TyCor title, Debbie Clark at TyCor title provided, which shows that, that the westernmost tax lot, which is tax lot 700, consists of two parcels, which were created well prior to 1972, but which were included in a land sale contract in 1972, described as tracks two and three of that land sale contract. And that land sale contract has been, is, is included in your materials just, just to the left of the assessor's map. And the important thing about that document is that it can, it contains essentially a description of the tract, which is parcels, former parcels one, which is not owned by the Ruggles, two, three, and four, which are owned by the Ruggles. And then if you turn the page, you'll see, together with a non-exclusive road easement on an existing road from the county road, of the above-described tract. And that, that is the access that, that comes to all three of these existing legal lots of record, which consist of two tax lots. And I know that's a lot to try and get, get straight, but that's the context of this, of this application. With that, I'd like to just jump back to the, to attachment number one, which is the narrative that I put together to try and make some sense of all this. And as staff indicated, this application does not increase or decrease the size of the two lots that are in tax lot 1200, or increase or decrease the size of tax lot, excuse me, the two lots in tax lot 700, or decrease the one lot that's in tax lot 1200. What it does is it reconfigures the boundary between tax lot 1200 and the two parcels in tax lot 700. What it also does is, by virtue of this application, it combines the two lots that are in tax lot 700 into one lot. So it, it's a de-partitioning, not a partitioning. You end up, you start with three lots, you end up with two lots. One is a farm parcel, one is a rural residential farm parcel. And that is the, in essence, the applic, the application. So on the narrative in the second paragraph, the last sentence, "This lot line adjustment will not create a new lot or replat an existing subdivision or partition." That is your approval criteria number three, and that is the case. The uses for the parcels will not change between, between what's happening now. There's no development proposal involved in this lot line adjustment. There's no change in use anticipated as a result of this application. About the fifth or sixth paragraph down on the narrative, it says, "Neither parcel will be reduced in size below the minimum parcel size relating to such parcel. All the pre-existing parcels are currently below the minimum parcel size in the zone." That's approval standard number one of your land division ordinance, and that is satisfied in these, in this fact situation. Your approval standards also require that there be no violation of the comprehensive plan or the zoning ordinance. We have, we have cited the ways in which we believe this is the case. One, there's no zone change requested. Two, there's no new residence that is proposed or permitted by this land use action. And three, the intent and purpose of the plan, the comprehensive plan, is not compromised by, by combining the two parcels in tax lot 700 into one parcel, one legal lot of record. So that's your, that's your approval standard number two. Finally, as I started out describing with the, with the land sale contract... Finally, as I started out describing with the, with the land sale contract in 1972, which was, which was finalized by deed in 1991, both tax lots and currently all three parcels have legal access through the roadway that you see coming up on the, on the left-hand side of the property there, which enters, actually, on the map there, it, it is, it is, it enters tax lot 1200 and then goes, goes to the left, and near the multi-use building, it enters tax lot 700. So that, that road was, is, is a, is a long pre-existing road. The oldest map that the county has is 1963. It shows access through that road to a pre-existing building or residence that existed on that property prior to the time that the current house was built in 1981. And the current house, house, which was a replacement dwelling, was built by, we believe, by Mr. and Mrs. Tapp, and subsequently went through a couple of owners before Mr. and Mrs. Ruggles bought it in 1999. Now, on, on tab number four, what I've provided to you is a Google map from 1994 showing Dusty Drive, which is that access easement referenced in the land sale contract. Now, which goes all the way into the residence. Then I have for you a 1982-83 map. You'll have to turn the, turn the, that shows the route of that, the route of that easement all the way from where it gets Old Seville Road up to the Ruggles property. You'll see it. It passes, it passes the Keck residence on the left and the Levi, I believe it's the Levi residence on the right. This picture was taken, I believe, before the construction of the Mahesh property, which came later and is off to the right. An older map from the 1970s, the county surveyor provided, or researched for and found together, and we could not find a date, but the best that I could, the best information I was provided was that this map is from the 1970s. It also showed the roadway going up. We believe that roadway went to the original residence that was replaced, that, on the property that was purchased by Mr. and Mrs. Tapp. So the, the existence of legal access to the parcels that are being adjusted, that is also a criteria, it's your fourth criteria. I believe it's criteria four. Yes, it's criteria four on your Land Division Ordinance. And we believe that we've satisfied that burden of showing that that access does exist. We, there is a comment back, which we believe raises a good, a good point, a relevant point, and that is that Bill Gillie made a comment back that I think reflected the appellant's comments to the effect that the maps provided to the county did not show how bigger parcel that's going to be created, is going to be accessed. In other words, where is the road access going to go into parcel number one? It, your, your map, or the proposed map that you have, and I added it under, behind tab six, shows that road coming in and going onto parcel two. It is a, it's a, it's a valid point, and, and we think an appropriate point for an additional condition of approval, that the, that the approval that the commissioner would give to this should require the applicant to identify where that access is going to go onto parcel one, the bigger parcel, either off of the existing access easement, 30-foot existing access easement, or coming onto parcel two and going through parcel two to get to parcel one. So either way, we think either way would be consistent with the existing legal access, but we think a condition of approval that would require that to be submitted and approved by the planning staff prior to the recording of a lot line adjustment deed is an appropriate response to the comment from Mr. Gillie and implicitly from, from the appellant's. There was a, and this appeal may have proceeded from a misunderstanding by the Ruggles. They, initially, they put a gate for access in, into the larger parcel, and that, that gate was located too far down here. It, it, it left the easement, crossed the Mahesh property to get to the gate. Mahesh has brought that to the attention of the Ruggles. The Ruggles immediately, first of all, apologized, and second, removed the gate. And that gate is no longer there, and, and was moved back up to where the, up to where the easement enters, enters the Ruggles property. So we think that may have, there's an issue as to, the, one of the comments that the appellant's made is that they would like to be able to plant grapes on their property, and that's certainly appropriate and, and their right. And in that area, which lies westerly of the road, in between the property lines, that's an area that should be available for planting of grapes, and we, we don't contend that a access should be able to go through there, should not be able to go through there unless there was some kind of agreement between the parties. So we think that this condition of approval would mitigate that, eliminate that concern, and eliminate that as a perceived threat from this action.
Mr. Gallow, while we're on that, I just had a couple of questions. There's no scale on this. It's hard to see what this, this sketched-out road, if that's actual gravel or if that's right-of-way, I'm not sure, but it looks to me like that this road that accesses their property onto parcel two should then turn, once it's on their property, onto parcel one.
That's one way.
That doesn't, that, then you don't have the conflict of additional agreements on the easement prior to entering the property.
It really depends on where the dividing line between parcel two and parcel one is. If it is made at the point of the entry of that road, you may have a single entry point where you go, which sits in a Y, and goes two different directions.
But that's where I say, I don't know if this represents your full right-of-way, and if it does, it looks like you're past that point of debarcation with the lines, with property lines.
We, we believe there's a 30-foot right-of-way, and we believe that where the gate is currently right now is within that 30 feet.
And I might mention, if I may, when I put this preliminary drawing together to submit to the county, it was diagrammatically to show what was going on. So, there, there, and from a scale standpoint, it could be off a little bit here and there. But, once again, we have approximately 40 feet, give or take, from where the right-of-way, road right-of-way intersects that southern property line there. We have, we can get access to parcel one.
And do you have a relatively current survey that shows you exactly where those, where those lines are and the easement lies, or is this something that's kind of in question?
The easement has not yet been laid out as to where it will get to parcel, the larger parcel, but it will have to be before the second parcel, before the lot line adjustment can be done. That needs to be completed.
We don't have a survey at this point, is what you're saying.
No, not one that lays that out, no.
Okay, thank you.
Now, the only other thing I wanted to say to the commission before just stopping, and I know you have other matters to deal with today, so we'll try and cut this off. In attachment two, the, we've tried to respond to the specific points of appeal raised on the form submitted by the appellant's with our best, our best understanding of the situation. When, when they made the point that the parcel has been split into two parcels, we think that's not correct. What's really happening is three parcels are becoming two parcels, and the configuration line between the two tax lots is changing. Second, there's no easement or plan for the second parcel. We think an additional condition of approval will address that point. Third, we're planning to use that area to plant grapes. We completely support the ability of the neighbors to plant grapes on whatever portion does not block the easement roadways. The easement roadway is obviously needs to be used for that, but the rest of their property cannot be, have no, no desire to prevent the use of that for growing grapes. And fourth point, before the parcel split, there was one easement to Mr. Ruggles' property from our property. That's true, there is a single easement, but it serves a tract, and that tract was three parcels. So, all three of the parcels are served by that same easement in the original contract of sale. We think that, we think that that same easement is the only easement that exists, and we're not trying to use anything, not trying to deviate from that easement, but to remain on it. So with that, I'm going to stop and ask if the commission has any questions that we can respond to.
In your third point, where you talk about any tentative access to the tax lot, that, that any obstruction of the, of the easement roadway would be a matter for resolution in Circuit Court. Could you expound on that, please?
Well, if you have an easement to get access to your property across my property, right, and that access is, that easement is for roadway, that I cannot go plant my grapes in that roadway and prevent you from accessing your property, and if, and if I do, you can come and ask the Circuit Court to order me to remove that obstruction. You can't unreasonably obstruct an access, an access easement, but because it's in, what's called a non-exclusive easement, you and I can both use the road. You can use the road for another purpose that does not obstruct access. So there's, that's what's meant by that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I, I only had one concern, and that was, after reading Mr. Gillie's letter, I thought it was reasonable to identify and make certain that there was an appropriate map showing how that easement was going to be utilized to access the entire property once that lot line adjustment was completed. So, and I think the condition on adding that as a condition of approval would satisfy that concern.
In, in the last paragraph of the narrative, behind number, behind number one, we suggested that very thing. Staff, I believe, would have its own wording to utilize as a, as a proposal to address that, that issue.
Okay. Any further, any further questions? Okay. Do we have any other proponents who would like to speak? Okay. Steve?
She's raising her hand.
Steve, well, I've got a list here. Steve Wagner? I support the application. Are you opposing, are you opposing this? Are you supporting this application? Okay, then you are a proponent. So could, could you, would you like to speak?
We're together in this, and you know, we can consolidate this down.
Sure.
Perhaps from the four of us.
Whoever wants to speak, that'd be great. I've got a, Richard Wagner, Steve Wagner, a number of other people. So whoever wants to speak. Steve Wagner, Richard Wagner, Betsy Shan.
All right. I'm here.
Bingo.
Thank you.
Could you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Betsy Shan. I am a Realtor with Keller Williams. And the only part that you're missing that I'd like to enlighten you to is that my clients purchased Dusty Drive and the home in August. We have not been able to close. They have $10,000 in earnest money in escrow since the 29th of August. They cannot move in a house because we cannot get this property line adjustment put together to the satisfaction of the title company because we have an appeal, which is part of the process, because Mr. Ruggles, who is no Mr. Dietz, I want to tell you that, this guy is a good guy, put his gate in the wrong place, okay? So, he owns a pristine property. I've been a Realtor 20 years, over 500 transactions. You could eat off the barn floor, any place in the barn. You could eat off the floor of any place of the building, anywhere. This is a perfectly pristine place. Dusty Drive is a wonderful, quiet drive, but the issue here, is that he did the wrong thing at one point. He corrected that immediately. If we don't get our lot line adjustment, my people who have been out of a house since August have no house. So, we're looking for some resolution from you so that the neighbors, Mr. Ruggles, can decide where they want to put that gate to the other parcel that does not affect us. Does that make sense?
It does.
Because I know this is a confusing matter, but again, they bought the house, supposedly, we just can't close it. So we have a concern here, and we do have a dog in this fight, and it looks like they've got 30 feet there to work with. We don't want them all of a sudden saying now, until we've been sitting around for months in good faith on a transaction of significant dollars, to say, hey, by the way, now we need to come through your property to get to the other property. That's not how it got set up in the first place. These are separate parcels. So let's not forget that, right? I mean, they should be accessed according to the rules, but that appears to be the case when he says he can leave the gate at that 30-feet-foot window up at the top of that parcel that is the vacant land. So hopefully, we can, hopefully move to a conclusion so that at least my people will know before the end of the year where they're going to live. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have Mary Wagner.
She represents them.
Okay. Steve Wagner and Richard Wagner, are you all good?
I could say more like, I'm anxious it's actually costing me and potentially harming you guys for refraining, stay calm.
If you'd like to, if you'd like to come and speak.
I think so.
Okay, thank you. I cannot read your first name. Good?
Me, Dahi Good.
Dahi.
Yes, so I'm Dahi Good, and I'm a Realtor also. My address is 426 Murphy's Third Street in McMinnville. I represent the Ruggles, and I must say that they've worked very hard to meet all the requirements for this lot line adjustment. We did immense amount of research because some of the documents are so old to show that there was ownership in two different parcels prior to zoning, access prior to zoning. I just want to support the application, support the lot line adjustment, and also agree that with this appeal, I think the solution is very simple and readily obtained, and that is to have the access come in along the road to parcel one, separate from parcel two, because there appears to be enough room for that. I think one specific innuendo that we've discovered from the title research is that this access easement never was surveyed. So it exists now because we can see it, but we don't actually have dimensions to draw on. So perhaps compromise that is being suggested could create some legal definition of where that is, but there does appear to be a problem.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Okay.
He's, yeah, the applicant's, I mean, the appellant's.
Opponents, okay. Don't have a card. Do you state, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
I am Paru Mahesh.
And I'm Harihar Mahesh, living on 15651 Southwest Dusty Drive. Thank you very much for the opportunity to bring our concern.
So to start with, I know the buyers of the parcel two expressed, you know, in terms of the pain, and we understand it. At the same time, none of us is a done deal until it's done because we had the opportunity to submit an appeal, and based on what was going on, we did. So, you know, it's kind of not where, you know, this was not completely approved, so in a sense, the buyer's, you know, concern, I understand, but still, we have the right to go through this, though. And so I guess, the reason we appealed.
Yeah, the reason why we appealed in all the planning documents which we received from Mr. Armstrong and Mr. Armstrong's office, so, so in all of those documents, there was one, if you look at the map, there is only one entrance to the entire parcel, which is, it's been grandfathered in from 1972, like Mr. Ruggles' counsel mentioned. So, so there is only one entrance to the entire property, and in all these years, there's been only one. And then the reason why they are splitting is obviously they want to sell those two parcels separately. So then, once you sell the property, then if you have only one access to the entire 30 acres parcel, you are basically locking yourself out of that parcel one, which is the 29.67 acres, I think. Yeah. So, so our request to Mr. Ruggles, when he had put the gate, which was on October 13th, 2016, and we were leaving the next day to go to Boston to see our son, who serves in the military. So what had happened on that day, I woke up and I saw the gate in our property. And when we flew out, October 14th, we didn't have any papers with us, and during the trip over the weekend... And during the trip over the weekend, all I did was research about the easements, the deeds. That's what I was doing and spending less time with my son. You know, so that's when I called, I actually called Ms. Armstrong again, and I said, okay, can you email me the appeal? So our intention was not at all to file for this appeal. All along, we were thinking they are going to access parcel one through parcel two. That's how it's been for all these years. So our assumption was they were going to do that. And this was on October 17th, at I think 1:00 PM Eastern Standard Time, I emailed or faxed the appeal. So from get-go, we didn't want to go through this, and, but we are at a stage where I want all these to be legal and documented. I mean, that's all we are, we want. You know, I mean, now if they are selling as two separate parcels, then we need to figure out how they are going to access the parcel one. So the way they have done it today is they have created a gate which is on their property, but the way it's designed at the moment, it's going to ruin our property, which is right there. So that's why we had requested many times to have access to parcel one through parcel two. And as Mr. Springer was saying a few minutes ago, that'll, that'll be the simplest solution. So no, there won't be any conflict to anyone. So that's how the property was. Both the parcel one and parcel two were connected, and Mr. Ruggles used to access parcel one from parcel two all these years. So nothing would change, and they could close the way they wanted to, and they can, if they want, they can sell the two parcels independently if they want to. And you want to add?
I think the way they have the current road, again, if it is for farm use, you know, the width and the dimension and the angle will not work because any, any kind of trailer or truck has to back out into our property and, you know, potentially ruin our gate. So that's one of the other requests we made through our, through our communication is that to expand that so that existing acts, even if they were trying to do the existing access of property one separately from property two, at least they should have a wide enough entrance and wide enough gate so the farm use trailers or trucks can go through instead of this narrow one where they have to really back every time they need to enter whoever is the buyer for, you know, property one. So that was, you know, that was one of, one of the concerns for us. And I think the other piece of it is that they have a bond building in parcel two, which they've advertised as commercial building, but there's no, none of this easement is commercial easement or this, I mean, the area is only for residential agriculture use and cannot, at least from our knowledge, cannot be used for commercial purposes. So you can see the real, I mean, they have the, it says as a commercial building in the real estate advertisements. So that's another concern that we don't, you know, unless we go through this process of getting permission and permits, it can't be reused as a commercial building.
Mr. Friday, did you want to comment on that particular?
I don't have any comments at this moment.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the only request which we have is if they can access parcel one from parcel two. That's how it's been used all these years, and let's just keep it that way. It'll be so simple, and they won't need, there won't be any need of documentation or deed recording or any of that. I just want all of us, including Mr. Ruggles, to be legal, documented, so either his clients or us, living on that hill, we just moved a year ago on that hill. And so we just want to make sure everything is legal and documented. That's all. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do we have any other opponents who'd like to speak? Okay, any public agency reports, rebuttal by proponent?
Thank you. Just a, I think, one or two short points. We believe that the original 30-foot access easement should be available for access to one or both parcels, and so we don't think that a condition that requires entry through one parcel to get to another parcel and has to vary from that easement would be an appropriate condition, though we think it's one alternative that the, that the property owner has. What we think is that, that the condition of approval would be appropriate that says that, that access to parcel one must be specified to the satisfaction of the county planning department, either from the existing easement where it enters our client's property, or through the parcel two that's being reconfigured. Either one of those two accesses should satisfy the county's criteria, and we don't think that it really is appropriate for, for the property owner to be, to be required to choose between those two unless and until the surveyor completes that work. If it's not possible, the surveyor can't get access to parcel one off of the existing easement, then, then the surveyor can, then a reconfiguration through parcel two can occur. But irrespective, we don't, we think that the existing easement is there, and it's there for the use of both parcels, not just for one parcel. And I think that's the only rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes?
I have a question for Mr. Gell.
Yes.
Looking at this drawing and how this easement comes up at a fairly, fairly flat angle to parcel one, and assuming that there's probably going to be some kind of a farming activity on the almost 30 acres, that's a very difficult corner to make if you've got any kind of equipment. You know, it's a, it's at least a 90-degree turn coming off the existing easement, and that would be my only point, that bringing equipment off a parcel one onto the existing easement is going to be very difficult for that turn to be made there, is my guess. And so that would be something that you might want to look at also is, is how does that comply with the easement? You don't want the trucks going outside and of those easements getting in ditches and those kind of things. So you want to really consider that, I think, even from your angle, Mr. Ruggles?
I, we could.
On that particular road.
We agree with that point.
Okay.
And we think that that's between Mr. Ruggles and his surveyor to sort that problem out. Right now, there is a 16-foot gate, which is a fairly standard agricultural-sized gate, which will accommodate most trucks. Whether they can make that corner within the 30-foot area is going to determine whether or not there's a need to add some more easement going into parcel two.
Yeah, if I may, I think access to parcel one, even though you're correct, it's going to be 90 degrees or maybe even a greater degree opening. It would be easier coming out of that angle rather than trying to go into parcel two and angle in to parcel one. So, I mean, it could be even more of a, a more difficult angle to get out of if we work in that direction. To the extreme, if we're forced to go into parcel two through the gates and then access parcel one, certainly, that could be a possibility, but it really puts an immense burden, in my opinion, on the owner of parcel two, because you've been out there, we have large stone pillar, gate post. It's really, those, that entrance is defined for that house and buildings there. So if at all possible, as Mr. Gell suggests, if the surveyor can work out an entrance off of the easement directly into parcel one, that would be the preferred direction to go for everybody's benefit, in my opinion. I believe that there's adequate space that can be accomplished to allow proper turning and so forth.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Could you state your name again, please?
Sure. My name's Betsy Shan. I represent the buyers, the Wagner's, Steve and Richard, Mary Wagner, who have been the ones without a house since August. But they purchased a property based on what we believe to be the opportunity to buy once we had the property line adjustment that didn't change any of the size of the lots, correct? And granted, I understand that they're concerned about the change of use there, but how they dictate a driveway when this is a non-exclusive easement? I mean, there's the right of way already exists, exists. I mean, can we agree on that? I think that point has been made, but to go and make the turn into the parcel that the Wagner's are buying, that is almost unrealistic. There are already stone pillars there. You can never take a big truck through there anyway. So now we have to change the spirit of what is taking place here. All this is really based on the sale to the Wagner's so they can have a home. I'm sorry, the Ruggles and the neighbors didn't get together before that and work this out, but I'm not sure that it's the proper process to go through this at this point to dictate how the access to a parcel that's unrelated to the sale, how that be done by the neighbors at this point. I think we do have to stick to the law, I agree with him, but there's a 30-foot width there that should suffice. If you look at the properties before that on Dusty Drive, they share the same kind of 90-degree turn. So they're taking farm equipment in and out of their driveways at a 90-degree turn, so to impose.
Well, the only problem would be if, if the right of ways established, or the easement's established, and they're not able to turn onto one because the easement's not wide enough, that's going to be a problem.
I agree with you there.
Okay.
And Mr. Springer, that's the next sale. That's not the sale included in the parcel that's going on right now, but that would be the next sale, and they may well be back to visit you on that. It's a non-exclusive easement right now to the sale of the parcel that we're talking about, which is not parcel one. It's parcel two. For clarity. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents who want to talk? The opponent? Mr. Mahesh? Mrs. Mahesh? Would you like to come back and?
Thank you.
I guess, again, Paru Mahesh and Hari Haram Mahesh. So I guess, though, the buyer is saying, you know, it's not relevant to this parcel one, whatever they're doing, but from our perspective, neighbors who's using the road, it is relevant how they're selling the two properties and how they access the two properties. So, you know, from their perspective, it's not, but from our perspective, it is very relevant because our garden and our fence line just backs up to that entrance to where they have the entrance to parcel one right now. So it is, I mean, to Mr. Springer's point, the way the current is, is a 90-degree turn, there's no really space to go in, and, you know, the logical conclusion for us, if they can go in, they're going to back out. So that's why, you know, we're thinking. So I guess I understand from, they're trying to buy the property, they're concerned only about that, but right now, that 30-feet gate, they've been using it so far to bring trucks and everything else. So the way the gate is, it can be used today, but, you know, that's, it's not for us to dictate, but we're seeing our concerns, like, you know, what it is. So it is based on our concerns, I guess, the decision you make, and again, it's based on what the easement and the survey comes out with, but we can just express what our concerns are, so.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, right now, I think it's a 16, 18-feet gate. I think if it can be wider, you know, to about 30 feet, then a big trailer with the hitch in the back, they can stay in that easement, and they won't ruin any, anything whatsoever. So it'll be a lot easier to going in and coming out. So that could be another option, too. You know, just widen the gate, put a two gates, which is about 18, 18, 36 feet now, and then have that road wide enough so track, I mean, the big, 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 big equipment can go in and out of the parcel.
Because once they sell and go, then we have to deal with the problem. That's why, you know, it's one of those things where, you know, everybody's concerned about, obviously, you know, how it impacts them, so, you know, because we're going to stay there, and, you know, so that's, yeah, so that's, that's the thing for us, because it does impact us.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I, ma'am chair, and I think that you should at least have, ask the applicant if they want to say anything else about this.
Mr. Gell?
No. Other opponents, proponents?
We appreciate the concern, and we think that the proposed condition of approval will address that concern adequately. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff recommendation?
Staff recommends approval of the application with the conditions of the September 30th, 2016 decision letter, and adding a condition which states a 30-foot wide minimum, non-exclusive easement for ingress and egress shall be established to provide access to parcel one, surveyed and included in the deed finalizing the lot line adjustment.
Thank you.
Just a question. 30-foot easement, but having no impact on the gate, so that the concern that's been raised, would that, can we require that gate be enlarged, or is there any?
Our, our land use requirement is for a 30-foot wide easement. Obviously, they could include the gate, and if they wanted to widen the gate, they could do that. It's just a minimum requirement of 30-feet width.
Okay.
And I think, you know, if the board wants to, I think they can make it wider, but I think that is something that the two parties could also work out on their own.
Yeah, and I, that's the thing that concerns me with an issue that, of this nature, is how much conversation's been taking place between the neighbors to resolve this issue in a, you know, you're all going to be living together. It'd be far more harmonious if you could work it out neighbor to neighbor without the Board of Commissioners saying, you must do this. I know, speaking for myself, I don't like to be in that position, but I certainly want to make certain that everybody's concerns are addressed here, and that when we leave this room today, there's an understanding of what everybody's concerns are and how we, as, as neighbors, can address those without creating some kind of a, you know, what is it, the McCoys and the, wherever they were. There you go. Anyway, so that, that would be my wish, but I had mentioned earlier after reading Mr. Gilly's letter that I did think it appropriate that that condition be added, so that's, that's all I have to say.
Anybody else? All right. Well, let's close the public hearing and begin deliberations. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion. Go ahead. I move that we deny the appeal. In this matter, we approve the application of the Ruggles for the lot line adjustment with the condition originally recommended by the staff and the additional condition requiring access recommended by the staff this morning.
We have a motion. Do we have any further discussion? I'd like to just ask about the feasibility of adding another condition to that, and that would be having to do, and I know this follows on what Commissioner Primisic has asked about the gate, if we can somehow mitigate concerns about, about widening that. No.
You want us to propose a condition?
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering, what's, what is, what are the, what would be next steps for us to include that as a condition of approval?
I guess you would then maybe require the easement to extend out to include the gate, if I'm understanding the question correctly. I'm not sure if anything you want to add.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe that the, the condition, would you like to include that the condition requires that the applicants widen the gate?
Well, I'm just saying that this seems to be one of the sticking points, and that if that is something, am I, am I correct in understanding that that was one of the concerns?
Yeah.
That if we can sort of lay that to rest now, and as, as one of the conditions, if that would be considered onerous in any way?
Since you asked for feedback.
Could you come to the microphone?
Since you asked for feedback from, from the appellant, let me just say that, that condition, it seems to me, should only, only be applicable in the event that condition, it seems to me, should, should only, only be applicable in the event that the area necessary to accommodate a wider gate would be one that the Maheshs would be willing to widen that, that, that small area next to their, that property to have due, because otherwise it would require destruction of the current entry, which is quite expensive. And that, putting in that condition of approval would, would essentially destroy the existing character of the entrance unless the Maheshs cooperated in providing a widening of the easement to the, to the southerly, southerly side. Now, that, that, that is something that potentially can be, can be negotiated and I don't think the Ruggles have any objection to doing potentially that, but, but that would require, I hate to see that made as a condition of a land use approval. That's more of a condition of sale where they, they, they have an incentive for that and they, then they can cooperate to make it happen.
Mr. Gell, could you clear this up for just a second for me? Is that, I've heard 16-foot, I've heard 18-foot. Do you know what it is? Maybe Mr. Ruggles-
It's 16-foot.
16-foot?
The, the gate, the current gate.
Okay, 16-foot. And that's in the clear? You got 16-foot?
Yes. To the left of the stone pillars.
Okay. And so for me to dictate the size of a gate that goes into your property, I think is a little bit of an overreach. If you can't make it through a 16-foot gate, you might want to go back to the DMV and, and have your CDL looked at or something. You know, honestly, that's, that's a lot of room, so.
Well, if I might add, one of, one of the things that we're required to do is just follow the, the code. And I love it, the idea of trying to fix this, but it does get into civil issue. And we're just proposing the minimum conditions that are required by the, by the ordinance. And we're hoping that both sides will be able to work this out. And there's going to be time for them to do that in that it'll take a few weeks for the findings to be prepared. And then there's going to be a time where the opponents can appeal this if it doesn't get worked out. So we're hoping that this whole process will provide that, that, that time for all the parties to, to work this out. So we are hopeful that this process will bring that about, but I don't think it would be appropriate for us to do that.
Little, little overreach there.
Little bit.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a motion from Commissioner Springer and that motion is to deny the appeal and approve the application by James and Susan Ruggles for a lot line adjustment with the conditions originally recommended by staff and the additional condition regarding the access recommended by staff this morning. Do we have any further discussion?
No, other than to say I sure hope you guys can get together and-
We hope so, too.
Everybody can be happy when we're all done. You know, we're hitting the holiday season. Let's make it merry.
We hope the same.
Well, I think we've seen, we've seen here in these, in this room that oftentimes what seems like a big sticking point actually is something that can be, can be agreed upon and compromised and mitigated simply by sitting down and having a discussion and talking about it without us having to get into any kind of a, of a, of a process here. So we've seen it happen before and I have every belief that they're not unreasonable concerns on either end. So I'm hoping that with what we decide here today could just be the beginning point for you to work out the details of, to make it, to make it work for both of you. So then at this point, I'll, I'll, I'll ask for a vote on this, on Commissioner Springer's motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes unanimously.
And Madam Chair, I would ask for until December 15th to come back with a board order and the written findings on this.
Okay. And that will come back on the 15th.
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that and we look forward to hearing some positive resolution so that everybody can live happily ever after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. All right. We'll close that. Do we want to take a, can we take a five-minute break here before we move into the next hearing?
See you, sir.
This is officially, we're starting to celebrate Christmas. This is the first, right?
Yes, December 1st.
Yeah. We'll get started right now.
December 1st.
Unless it feels much funnier, you know, you can pick a last one.
Yeah.
I had it here. I brought water.
We're going to-
No, no, I just didn't say it.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was asking.
You know what?
I just passed it up more than the last one.
Because I think that probably group calls.
I know, I just had to joke. Yeah, even the men are putting on the clothes.
Oh, okay, I feel so much better.
No, this is really good.
I was wondering if it was here or...
So that was your dad? Whoa, that's so cool.
We need a step pocket for the file. Explains it, right? It's happened to throw it over.
Nah, that's why you're so naughty. Alright, how long has he been there?
Um, so then...
And your place?
Oh, um, this one, he's... But he's been a pastor Calvary for six years and he's passed his oath of service.
Nathan Beavis?
He's called from...
Nice.
He likes it, I don't know why. She knows the people that have some people here.
Yeah, that's great.
Dave Adams from KLYC comes every week and does our commissioner formal sessions and streams them live on KLYC and also archives them there. And on days like today where it's kind of a marathon, we know you've got so much going on, but we appreciate your being here, so thank you so much. So we will resume formal session for December 1st, 2016. Welcome you all. And we'll move into item E3, which is docket C-13-16, an appeal of the planning commission's approval of a conditional use for home occupation. Applicant Kerry Loughlin, appellant Stephen Leonard. So we will open up the public hearing. And any abstentions or objections to jurisdiction? None? Alright, the statement, Mr. Sadlo.
And again, I guess at this point I would ask is if there are any ex parte contacts you wish to put the substance of on the record, or if you want to state whether or not you did a site visit, this would be the good time to do that.
Okay, no ex parte and...
I've done site visits, like I do on the rest of the...
I've done site visits, driven up and looked around, but I have had no ex parte communication.
Mr. Sadlo?
And we're back to the statement, and I'm sorry that most of you already heard all of this, but Oregon law requires that persons who attend a land use hearing be advised of certain rights and duties before the hearing begins. First, with regard to the standards of approval, state law requires that we list the applicable substantive criteria that must be met in order for the county to approve the application. The applicable standards will be listed by the county planner in a moment as part of the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the standards for approval. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford a decision maker, the decision makers in the parties, an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. Second, the raise it or waive it rule, any issue that might be raised in an appeal of the county's decision in this matter must be raised before the record of this hearing is closed. If you do not raise the issue before the record is closed, you cannot raise it on appeal. Third, and this is directed at the applicant, under ORS 197796, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval, again with sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to the issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. And this is not the initial evidentiary hearing on this matter since it was heard by the planning commission.
Okay, thank you, counselor. And can we have a staff report?
Yes. The property is approximately 24 acres with access on the Fox Ridge Road, and the applicant is currently using an existing gravel yard near the north end of the parcel to park the vehicles for the proposed home occupation. The parcels to the north, south, and west are zoned EF80 exclusive farm use. The parcel to the east is zoned PWS, Public Works Safety District, and it's owned by the city of McMinville and is used as the water reservoir for the city. Further to the east and southeast of the applicant's property are parcels zoned VLDR 2.5, which is a very low-density residential zone, and that area is currently rural residential parcels. The planning commission did approve the application with a vote of five to two at their October 6th hearing. This application needs to satisfy the criteria in sections 501.03(c) and the home occupation criteria in section 1004 and the conditional use criteria in section 1202.02 of Yamhill County zoning ordinance. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you. And may we have the proponent's case?
Proponents.
Proponents. Proponents, do we have any, do we have any proponents? I see these statements here, but nobody has... Okay, I've got one here that doesn't have... I'm sorry?
Right here. You have the proponent?
Oh, okay.
The proponent is the applicant.
Right, no, I'm looking here at numbers that aren't even checked, so I don't know who's who, but anyway, go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Kerry Loughlin, and I am the applicant for Fox Ridge Road. I've been a member of this community my entire life. I was born and raised here. I went through all 12 years of school in Attleboro. And when I turned 23, I started to start an excavation business in Yamhill County and some parts of Polk County. I have since been in business 11 years, and in the last 11 years, we have succeeded in trying to do business in a good way and be respected in the community. I, right now, employ two people, both small families, a family of five and a family of four, and my family of three. I've never had more than three employees. We had a part-time employee this summer, which would make our third employee. I don't have any desire to be a large company. Under this condition, I'm only allowed five employees, and I have no desire to ever get to five employees. I first came about this property a year and a half ago. It was presented to me by a gentleman that had been maintaining this property, Mr. Sid Smith, the owner of the property, for the previous four years. And then he wasn't allowed to be on the property anymore. He actually was living in the building, which is considered a non-livable dwelling. That's why we are applying for a livable dwelling permit to make this a legal dwelling. The gentleman that was there in the beginning for the first four years lost his home during the recession, and Mr. Sid Smith was gladly enough to let him stay there and live for four years rent-free, all cedes maintaining the ground. There's been some accusations that Mr. Sid Smith is profiting from what he's done with his property, and by no means has he ever accepted a dime for anything anyone has ever done up there. I have never paid Mr. Sid Smith. We have an agreement. Our agreement is that I maintain the property for him, and I'm allowed to park my equipment there. Now, with the building permit that we're applying for, we plan to have one of my employees, my foreman, Joey Rose Nosland, live there. I was told during the application that an employee of our company, not the owner, but the employee of our foreman, could legally live in this dwelling. So Mr. Smith and I have tried to bring everything up to code, that when we were made aware of the parking there was not legal. When I first came to this property, I didn't have any intentions in living in this barn. We just wanted to use it for a facility to work out of. Now that it's been brought to our attention that we need to pull these permits, we've gladly done everything, and we've tried to do all of our due diligence to follow by the rules and take care of them as soon as they are brought up in front of us. So, since Mr. Smith is not allowed to take care of the property, we've taken care of all the permits. Let me clarify why Mr. Sid Smith can't take care of the property. Mr. Sid Smith has a real bad class of MS. He's wheelchair-bound, and the further it gets, the worse it gets, so he's not able to take care of it. So, we plan to make everything legal. We follow all the criterias. We are a fully fenced area. We're not visible from the main road. The nearest thing to us is the water storage towers that Mack Water and Light owns. I have pictures that I can provide that show the distance from us to the water storage towers and the distances that we are from Fox Ridge Road, and we are behind locked gates. I've also, since the last hearing, I know that a lot of the neighbors are concerned about traffic on the road, which I want to respect their concerns and work with them. So I kept records of all of our vehicles and our heavy equipment of the times and days that it came up and down the hill, and I have all those with me. The concern was the heavy truck traffic, dump trucks and such. I have that with me. We've been up and down the hill seven times in over 60 days. So if you think about it in those terms, a school bus is as big as our dump truck. A school bus goes up and down Fox Ridge twice a day. A garbage truck is as big as our dump truck, and it's as noisy as a dump truck, probably louder, and they're up there once a week. And clearly, these services are up there just as much or a lot more than we are. And granted, we're not a service that these people want every day, but we're a service in the community that people need. Maybe it's not people on Fox Ridge, but it's people in West Wind or people off of Baker Creek. It's all a service. We're just not the service these people want. So, I guess in my closing statements, I'd like to do whatever anyone has a problem with. I'd like them to come talk to me. I mean, we want to be friendly neighbors. I don't want any issues with people. I'd like to be able to drive down the road, smile, wave, and say hello, not be afraid that they're upset. I guess that's about all I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Loughlin, is it appropriate for me to ask questions at this point?
Sure.
Some of the issues that were brought to our attention were that you had been there operating with, for quite a, how long before...
We've been there a little over a year and four months now, a year and a half we've been there.
And that, that there was no, I mean, in other words, this was supposed to be owner-occupied, correct? I know this is supposed to be, that if you are operating a business, that you be an occupant of the property, correct?
It stated that.
Or an employee?
Correct.
If I may throw in here, you know, Mr. Loughlin wasn't aware that there was a need for a home occupation. And we received a complaint, and as soon as he was made aware of it, he came into our office and tried to find out whatever he could to make it right. And, you know, I've read some of the things, and I went through the planning commission hearing, and he was fairly harshly criticized for not being in compliance. And I will say, I wish all of our enforcement people were like Mr. Loughlin, because he's trying to make it right. He's trying to go through this and make it right, and he wasn't aware that there was a need to have someone live on-site for a home occupation. I will also say it's perfectly understandable that he might not be aware of that, because this is a farm zone, and, you know, in looking through the state statutes, I can pass this out, there is a statute 215-311 that allows parking up to seven dump trucks and seven trailers in the exclusive farm use zone. And now, his property is not exclusive farm use, it's AF10, but all of the property around him can have dump trucks and trailers, and actually, seven log trucks are also allowed in the area. So it's understandable that in this area, he might not have been aware that he needed to have this, as soon as he became aware, he's made the application, is going through the process.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Any other question?
Yeah, I do. So in your, reporting on your trip log, some of what I've read in the testimony of the opponents has talked about this increased truck traffic. Can you kind of paint for us a picture of how your operation works when you leave the hill and how you disperse yourself through the month? Because I would expect with this, you know, this kind of complaints, that you're back and forth every day. Tell me how that doesn't happen.
Gotcha. So, the way this works is every morning, we're at the shop somewhere between 7:00 and 7:30. This time of year, when it's darker later, we're probably closer to 8:00. We meet there, we make the plans for the day. We either depend on if we're on a single job together, or if we're on three different jobs, then we all three go in different directions. If we're on the same jobs, we take one, we have trucks for the four doors, so we take one. So we load up the truck with our supplies for the day, we drive down the hill, we go to our job.
Now, is this a semi-truck, or is this a...
This is a Ford pickup.
Pickup?
Okay, pickup, alright, alright. Just with a pipe rack. I would say 80% of the time, our large equipment, which was, I guess, drivable equipment is our dump truck, stays on-site at the projects. And there is times where it does come home, and it's because we're in between projects, but 80 to 90% of the time, it stays in the project because it's just like a piece of equipment that's being used. And at five miles to the gallon, I might try to grab the pickup and pull it up.
So the dump truck's not coming back and forth every day. Once you send it out, you're on a project. Now, I guess I would draw the assumption, once that project's done, because of scheduling and all that, you're probably headed to another project and not necessarily back home. Would that be correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And I can reflect that in the log and background that I have with it, because like I said, I keep the dates. Between October 8th and now, I've been up there seven times with that truck, up and down the hill. And the one time that it did go up and down the hill, we were pulling a tractor behind it to mow the property. So it was a farm use that they had execution with that.
Okay.
One of the...
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the opponents has talked about the increase in the frequency of the trips, but you took a look at the dates that were in question and said that you were not even in town?
That is correct.
Can you speak to that directly, please?
I was accused, and I don't remember the exact date, I would say it was August 28th, which was a Sunday, and we were accused of multiple truck traffic up and down the hill that day on that Sunday. On that Sunday, I was in Sun River with my family, and my guys were all with their families, and I noticed the neighbors paved the driveway.
So this was a paving, a paving job that was being done, it had nothing to do with your operation?
Nothing to do with us.
So when, another, another issue that is being brought up is the cracks in the asphalt and worries about the weight of the truck, loaded trucks. How often or do you bring trucks that are loaded up and down the hill?
We try our best to leave the equipment on the job sites or go from job site to job site, not take it home, it sits overnight, and then we go back the next day. There is times that that does happen, because we may be working in Lafayette next morning and we're still in the building, so we'll go back to the shop with a skid steer on the trailer or something like that. Large equipment doesn't come up and down the hill very often, because we try to go from job to job, because it saves us money versus taking it back up the hill. I did see their concerns about the cracks in the road, and the pictures, I have pictures to document those cracks all the way to the top of Fox Ridge. We've never been past our driveway with the intensity. So, I don't personally believe that were the problem to Fox Ridge or the cracking. I do know that Fox Ridge is rated for like 80,000 pounds, because anything over 80,000 pounds, you need a trip permit, and for everything we own is under 80,000 pounds. 90% of the only one piece of equipment is 36,000 pounds, the rest is under 25,000 pounds.
Thank you.
Yeah, my, my major concerns were the fact that the early use of the property without being properly permitted, and then the, being a home business, not living on-site, nobody living on the site, so it doesn't qualify. And I guess my concern is that people say it's easier to get forgiveness than permission and go out and do things that they, back of their mind, know probably they're on the edge, but think, well, if somebody says something, I'll deal with it. I'm not making the assumption that was your, the case here, but those are the things that concern me when I see things like this. And we do have all of these ordinances in place for everyone's protection. Property owners have a right to enjoy their property. They purchased it with a, with something in mind, and I believe that everybody should have an opportunity to utilize their property as long as they're not infringing on the same rights that other people have to have the enjoyment of their property. And we had a case in here this morning where that's happening, and that's the kind of thing that I try and hope as I'm making decisions to avoid. So, with rights do come responsibilities. From everything I've heard and seen in relationship to how you've handled things since you were made aware, it's to be noted that that's been very much open and above board and the way it would be expected, so. But that's been the concern back in my mind, is that for a year and a half, it was being operated, we might say illegally. And, and so that piece is a concern, and then to make a condition that you do get a dwelling on the property and have somebody living there to qualify seems somewhat a reverse order of things, so. Those are the things that I've been struggling with in, in looking at this, and I did, like I say, drive, I've been up on Fox Ridge Road many times, but, so I can appreciate why the residents up there would have a concern. I personally, when you said the number of trips that you've taken, I was taken back because I would assume that with that kind of a business, you're up there quite often. So I appreciate the fact that that is a very minimal number of trips that come down that road, so. But I just wanted to make you aware of the things that have been concerning me, and you've addressed, or they've been addressed by Mr. Friday, so.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mr. Loughlin. Appreciate it. Alright. Do we have proponents? Yes. Cheryl? Reuter?
No other proponents?
No other proponents?
No.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Excuse me. One second, we've got somebody else. You have another proponent?
Yes, I'm Terry Clebinger, T.R. Clebinger Construction. I live at 22648 Loganberry Lane in Sheraton, Oregon.
Thank you.
Okay, and, you know, I hesitated to even come up and talk today, because personally, I, I just don't do this, you know? But I have been honored, and I say honored with a light and a heavy heart, okay? Sid Smith hired me a year ago to do some work on his home in town, and I'm a general contractor and have been since 1984, okay? Didn't know Sid at all. I have come to consider Sid Smith, if not a close friend, a piece of my family, okay? A more honorable man I've never met, never met. A more honest man I've never met. Does Sid need money from that property? That's like saying that a fish needs more water. No, he does not. Sid does these things out of the goodness of his heart. I was blessed to be the guy that he chose to go up and work on that building, okay? And I've spent the last six or seven months up there, and I will contest that everything Kerry says is absolutely the truth. I probably went more times up and down that hill in my work van than he has. I mean, it's, you know, we've reconstructed that thing, and Sid is in the shape that it's an extremely hard thing for him to do, just go up and look at this piece of property he had. The last time I went up there with him, he can actually drive, but he has this van that's configured so he can get an electric wheelchair, go up a ramp, and it takes the place of the seat, and you auto-ride with him. I, it was a hair-raising experience, I'll bet. But I, I went up and I, and I spent a good half a day up there with Sid, and he takes the most pride in that place. And I wondered what he wanted me to do about it, because technically, it looked pretty darn good, okay? I've spent the last six or seven months bringing that thing to as new, absolutely beautiful condition. I mean, and he had, he can't even get up there. He does that for, I guess, pride, he does it for the, to be a good neighbor. He does all the things that, that we would want our neighbor to do for us, okay? But Sid is getting in the situation where he's probably, and I'm no doctor, but I would say that Sid's not too long for our worlds. He's got the best attitude anybody I have ever met. He has no need nor makes no effort to hurt anybody, you know? So I've gotten to the point where rather than just treating him as a friend, I almost try to protect the guy, you know? And here I am, 63 years old, and I'm saying I protect somebody. I do. He's a great guy, you know? But everything that's been said here by Kerry and by you guys is absolutely the truth. I don't keep my farm anywhere near as nice as he does this piece of property that he doesn't live on, you know? It's, it's amazing that he basically just gave me a free hand to make this place beautiful again. So we've done extensive restoration work on this building. It didn't need it. The birds have pecked holes in the siding, so we replaced a bunch of siding, and then we repainted the whole facility. You know, we've done things that, that just have made it look exactly like it did in 1995 when this thing was built. And you can't even see it from the road, you know? You have to go up over his driveway to see anything in there that, that you could complain about, and there's nothing to it. He's got a picnic area in there that's 85 feet long, beautiful thing, that he built specifically just when he had his businesses, so his employees could go up that place to picnic. He's a great guy. The driveway going up to this place is a quarter of a mile long probably, and it's gated at the end, but the only people that go up and down that driveway is Kerry. The driveway's perfect. There's no cracks, there's no potholes, there's nothing on it, you know? And it's a gravel road. So if the road were going to be destruct, you know, if there was destruction being done to a road, it'd be that one, not to the blacktop road out at the other end. But I see very little traffic, you know, by, by him at all. I see a lot from Mack Power and Light, you know, their trucks go up and down the road, and their track hoes and all their stuff go up. go up there. But all in all, I don't, everything that I have seen, I would love to have him as my neighbor. I mean, dearly love to have him as my neighbor, you know? Problem is, he'd probably make me claim my place up, you know? But, but that's really all I had to say today, but I wanted you to understand who you're dealing with. This is a man with a wonderful attitude in a crappy spot, you know? But he doesn't think about himself. He thinks about all of us, you know? So what, what more can we do for this guy? I don't know. But we sure don't crap on him, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Riley? Would you state your name and address, please?
Yeah, my name, my name is Michael Riley. I live at six-zero-one Northwest Ninth Street. I, I, the main point of me coming here to share was to speak on behalf of my interaction with Sid Smith and, and what I've had a chance to experience. I, I work for Young Life. I lead the Young Life program here in McMinnville. And Young Life is a youth outreach organization. Our mission is to introduce adolescents to Jesus Christ and help them grow in their faith. And we work with some kids that, that have some pretty tough lives and, and we get a chance to be friends and mentors and it's a wonderful deal and I get the privilege of leading that. The, the reason that this, it is included with Sid is I met Sid about eighteen months ago, it was about, in February, through a friend and, and he has this barn and he has an upstairs finished place. And he asked me if, if, if I thought it would be a good place for kids to be used. And so I got a chance to sit with Sid and the first thing he said to me was, you know, I've always thought that this would be a great place for kids to use. And, and I thought that was significant because I think, to reiterate what Terry said, that his heart is, is to help those around him. He, he's always wanted that place to be used for kids. And I've had the opportunity to work with Kerry through that is we use that just a couple of times a month. We, we, we're up there and we have a chance to talk, to be friends with kids and, and talk to them about Jesus and help them out in their life. And I've had lots of chances to sit down with Sid. He's a very generous man and he, it has been a joy to get to know him and to see the heart that he has to, to take care of those less fortunate in our community. So I really just, my, my point is to share that he is a good man. He cares deeply about kids in McMinnville. And so I wanted to speak on behalf of his character. And, and I have had a chance to work with Kerry as a friend through this, as, as being there on the barn and, and seeing the way he's taking care of it. I can attest to the fact that he does an excellent job of taking care of the place. And, and so I would just say that Sid Smith is a, is a very, very good man. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. E M Greenleys?
Could I defer to Cheryl? She has a commitment.
Okay, wait, you have a, you're supportive?
I, I have an appeal.
Okay, you have, okay, you've got it here. Let me put this in the right thing. It says you're supportive.
So no more, are we done with the others?
No, no, we're not. I just want to get this squared away because it's listed in both places. So I want to make sure who's, who's up to bat. So, all right, we have another support. We have another proponent. Kirk, I'm sorry. We'll get you up on deck soon as we finish this leg. Kirk and Rob, sure?
Madam Chair, commissioners, I'm Bob Lwado, thirteen-nine-hundred Northwest Furcrest Road, McMinnville, Oregon. I have had the opportunity to know Kerry since he was in diapers. And not everybody has had that opportunity. My son and Kerry were raised together and good friends and I can honestly vouch for his character and his workability and what he has done. I've had him do projects for, for our company, Crossing Crown, and we've had very good success with that. Some of you may know our company. We're a logging company. We employ about forty people. Now, we have noise out in our area. I, I will tell you that right now. We have a lot of neighbors and, and we've got eleven trucks. I know the noise that the neighbors are concerned with and I can understand that. But if Kerry's only running up and down that hill a few times, which I think he is, because when he was doing our project, his dump truck was at our place. So I think that's something of a concern and I understand the neighbors' concern about that. And I hope that, you know, you can take a look at it. I had a chance to go to Bud's, his grandpa's funeral out there. I don't know the other gentleman, but the place was immaculately clean. Kerry's kept it that way and I was impressed with the whole setup that he had out there. I know that Kerry made an initial mistake on what he did as far as not applying for that, that particular permit, but I think that he has more than rectified that by coming and doing the planning commission, coming before the Board of Commissioners, accepting responsibility for it and doing what, what's right. So that's why I'm here to support him and support the ordinance that, you know, the plan to use change for himself and for putting a building on his property that can help somebody stay in it. I know some of the people that, as far as a small business owner, I, and that's where I consider myself, have been doing this for forty-some years. It's an opportunity for Kerry to, to succeed. I think that Kerry has the potential to probably at least have five employees, although he doesn't want them. I can tell you, they, they can be problems. But he's, he's going to do well as a, as a businessman and I think tax-wise, help the county and many other people. I know one thing that you can rest assured of is that when his truck is running, he is paying taxes because I have eleven of them and I pay more taxes on log trucks than anything I've ever, I've ever seen. So hopefully the county is getting some money out of them. So anyway, thank you for, for considering this and I, I hope that you will support Kerry.
Thank you.
My name is Kirk Lwado. It's my father, obviously. My address is two-two-eight-seven Northwest Horizon Drive in McMinnville. I, I really can't add a whole lot to my father's testimony, but I will say that I have known Kerry pretty much my entire life. And he is, he's a man of his word. He's a man of integrity. He's a man of honor and, and the things that he does throughout the day, throughout the work week, he does fairly and honestly. And he has always strived, as long as I've known him, to do what is right and what is fair. And I believe that, you know, with him going through these proper steps, I, I believe he has taken the proper steps to rectify the situation at hand. So I just wanted to say thank you for this opportunity and thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Just before you get up here, Mr. Lwado, would you give me a little sense? You've known him all his life and we had a little discussion here, maybe he knew and didn't do and, you know, a, a little, a little testimony up here. But is, is this Mr. Loflin the kind of businessman that would be involved in nefarious activities?
Uh, no, I, I don't believe Kerry would ever do anything like that intentionally. I think what happened to Kerry was he got so busy in trying to make things work so that he overlooked something that should have been looked at and didn't even think about it. I mean, I, I know Kerry that well, that it was, he's a goer.
Appreciate that. The other one is with his business practices. He's been in business a long time. Evidently, he's been in business ten years or whatever it was. Yeah. Does this, does this business owner, the kind of owner that has pride in ownership? You know, you and I know the difference in those. One just goes through the motions and, and, you know, kind of tears up everything on their way through to try to, to try to make a buck. What kind, what kind of a businessman is he?
Kerry is, does what he says he's gonna do and does it right. I, I see Kerry doing that. He did that on our project, came out there. He's known, of course, my mom, it was for my mom, who's eighty-seven right now. He didn't take advantage of her. He told her, came down and visited her. Took time to do that because she's known Kerry for a long time too and did the project the way it was supposed to be done. Told her what the price was. She wasn't shocked. In fact, I think she's gonna have him come out and look at some more. She's having some more grainy's problems, so she'll have Kerry come out again and take a look at that.
Okay.
So I, I highly recommend it.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have another proponent?
My name is Joel Camp. My address is nine-three-six-five Southeast Amity Road. I'm with Camp Rock Crushing and I would just like to say that, almost take some blame with some of the dump truck traffic that goes up and down the road. Because it is rural, people still have gravel driveways, happy use for gravel. So we go up there quite a bit. So I don't think that it's fair to say that Kerry is the only truck traffic going up and down the road. I also am a Young Life leader and so I've been able to see the generosity of Sid and it's pretty amazing. And also, I think, the only, the only other thing I want to say is how unique that property is. The fact that my brother lived at the top for a year and going up and down that driveway, or up and down Fox Ridge, I should say, never passed any of the other construction equipment from Kerry. Going past the property, you cannot see the barn, which is, I guessing, almost three stories tall, and you cannot see any equipment. All you can see is a, a nice-looking fence and well-manicured field.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Yes, sir?
I didn't fill out the green card. First time doing this process. My name is John Hance. I live in five-six-one-four Northeast Canard Drive, Hillsborough. I'm a character witness for Kerry. I've known him six, seven years now as I took over this territory, Yamo County. What I know about Kerry in these six or seven years in meeting him, he's a handshake guy. We all understand, we each want relationships, business relationships with people like that that are on a handshake, right? You trust what they say. They're gonna do what they say they're gonna do. And from what I know of Kerry, that's what's been going on. As far as the property that's in question, when he moved there a year and a half ago, we would go visit him at his, at this property for business transactions, things like that. The first time that I went there was the celebration of life. I was amazed at how pristine this property was. Not only could you not see it from the road, other than the gate, you can't see anything else, other than the water tower next to him. When you think of an excavation company, you normally think of dirt, mud, a lot of large equipment coming in and going, and that is not this property at all. And I say that, I, I was amazed at how clean that property was, just like this table, just like this courtroom. It was immaculate. For a character witness of Kerry, I ask that you forgive him of what happened in the beginning, know him as a character person, and I'm here to support Kerry in, a handshake guy, I know he probably wouldn't want to be here. He would rather have the said neighbors just come up and talk to him about that so that he didn't go, have to go through this process, as we all are, right? We're handshake guys. Neighbors can be neighbors. Let's get this worked out so we don't have to be here today. And so I'm here to support Kerry and know that that property is pristine, amazing, not a construction company like you'd normally see, so.
Thank you.
What, what business are you involved in?
Peterson Tractor. We sell the CAT construction equipment.
You're supposed to sell what?
We sell CAT construction equipment, so.
Oh, okay.
CAT dealership in the area.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Okay. Yes?
I didn't fill out a green, green card either, but I do want to see that Kerry is for Sid. My name is Mary Alfrin. I live at five-fifteen Northwest Eighteenth Street and I've known Sid for about fifteen years. I was his housekeeper for many years. What can I say about a man that treats a domestic like his daughter? This man is the epitome of honesty, of kindness. He treated me with respect, with consideration that no one has ever treated me like before. You will not, if you ever have the opportunity to know Sid, you would be blessed. He is just an amazing person. It hurts me, thank God.
Thank you. Do we have any other proponents? Okay, we can move on to the opponents. And I have a number of cards that haven't listed either one, so I'm gonna assume that you're an opponent. Cheryl? Cheryl Reuter? Reuter?
My name is Cheryl Reuter. I live at one-one-nine-five-zero Southwest Fox Ridge Road in McMinnville. And I'm one of the neighbors who is appealing the decision of the planning commission. I know that Steve Leonard is listed as the appellant, but we have gone together as a group of neighbors who are concerned about our property and we've worked together on this issue. I heard a lot of things just now about how nice Sid is and how nice Kerry is. And I know they're nice people. There's no, there's no objection to their being nice people. What I also heard though was that this is Kerry's property. He's operating from his property. This is his land, according to what people have been saying. He is not the owner of that property. And I think that there was a complete kind of a turnaround about what kind, how the zoning is. The zoning, as I understand it, it's on residential agriculture and forestry. It is not zoned for industrial purposes. When asked about this point, this is the planning commission, they said they did not see a problem, like there just was no conflict. However, to me, it's clear that when you're talking about agricultural, forestry, you're not talking about industrial uses. And if this is approved, if his application is approved, what precedent are we setting for industrial use of land that is clearly not zoned industrial? My second point of disagreement is that the business located on this property, as I understood it from the beginning, must be operated by the owner. Kerry is not the owner. Mr. Loflin does not own the property and therefore should not be able to allow a business run from this property. Then we've got the issue of the home, the residency, and the property has been used over the years as residential property. Even though there was no permit for a home to be built, in the beginning, there was a barn that was built for the horses. Well, if you go up and look at that barn, it's clearly tricked out to be a residence. And I, I think in some ways that we as neighbors up there should have been objecting a long time ago when there were people continuously occupying this property. And Mr. Smith, well, I know he's a nice guy, but to let people just live there rent-free, I don't, I guess there were some that did pay rent. But I just, I object to the fact that now we're gonna go back and allow a permit for a home after it's been used. And Mr. Loflin will not even be living there. He stated that before. Maybe a foreman, maybe another kind of employee. It's kind of like we're just, where are the rules? Where are the boundaries? Anyway, that's all I really wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
E M Greenleys?
My name is, initials E M Malcolm Greenleys. I live at one-two-one-six-zero Southwest Fox Ridge Road in McMinnville. We're longtime owners on Fox Ridge Road, moved there thirty-three years ago. And what happens is we've seen that property, this is now, I think, the fourth planning commission meeting I've come to where the issue was that piece of property. I would suggest that the commission be careful. This is not a referendum on Sid Smith or Kerry. This is an issue of zoning and use of the property. I think, first of all, I have, I have about five or six points. I'll try to be very succinct. The first issue is, is that the use of the property is creating what we, in economics terms, call an externality. And in effect, it's a cost that is incurred from a use, but that cost does not go back to the people who initiate or incur the cost. So in effect, I didn't realize Kerry's getting it for no rent. I think there's a potential there where- I think there's a potential there where the approval of that use, where he's not using, he's not living at the property, he's merely using it, represents a subsidy to him. Okay, he's a small businessman, he's employing other people, that subsidy may be perfectly appropriate, but not within the scheme of land use planning. The second issue...
Just a second, can I, just to get some clarification. What was that first statement about the cost?
The externality. It's like...
Okay, how do you tie that into this? I didn't hear you tie it in.
Okay, the cost, the cost is going to be incurred by the neighbors, not...
Cost of what?
On, in terms of the road condition, the safety, the home use rule violations. Those costs are not incurred by Kerry, they're incurred by the neighbors.
Well, actually, the county maintains the road. So, I'm not quite following you on your logic.
Which is another issue, and what we were hearing the first point, the degradation has not, the county has not responded to our requests for repairs as well as we think they should have, and part of that non-request for repairs, or non-action on the request for repairs, I think is going to get worse as the use of the road by the heavy equipment and the trailers increases, if the approval is agreed on. Now, the second...
And are you aware how we rate roads and how we deal with...
No, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that detail.
All right. Thank you.
I'd say the second issue that Cheryl has already approached is the home use rules, and whether it be the owner, whether it be Kerry, the lessee, or it be the foreman. So, we have, in effect, the person who represents the use is three steps removed. I have not heard, nor do I know, if Kerry has a lease, or it's merely one of those handshake deals. Again, the issue is, if you approve that conditional use, does that conditional use run with the property? Would other people be able to put it different use, or is it a specific use? The issues we've heard today in terms of the character of Kerry is fine, as long as he's there, but what if somebody else takes over? It still has a conditional use. It's something that'll go on. I would probably also caution you, at least in two earlier sessions that you had today...
Just another point of clarification.
Yes.
That's tied personally to Kerry, the conditional use.
Okay, if the conditional use is conditional to he only and not run with the land, that would be much easier.
Okay, well, we're just trying to clarify this so you understand as you go with these statements. Thank you.
You've had, I was just briefly going to say, you had two other actions earlier on the agenda today, both of which involve conditional use permits where people have just gone off the deep end in terms of how they're using their property, and now you're being asked to sort of solve that problem. That's a danger of conditional use properties.
I don't know that that, DS is a conditional use piece. That's not a, yeah, it's not a conditional use, so.
The largest issue that I see is the penalty, is the failure to consider the safety issues. Now, we low on the road, we drive the road all the time. What happens is, there are two significant points, if I might be able to show you on the map. Fox Ridge Road is pretty decent up in this portion here, but when you come around this corner, right by where Reuter's live, what happens is that it pinches down to, I haven't measured it, but it pinches down to a lane and a half, as opposed to the two lanes. If you meet a school bus, a garbage dump, or one of the dump trucks on that turn, it's a real serious problem. The second thing is, in the earlier hearing, we had representatives come up from Hillside Manor, a lot of people run or walk this road for exercise, all times. I can remember one morning, coming out of our driveway, turning the corner, and darn near ran into Liz Heller, who was walking. The reason was, the sun was in my face in the morning. So, it's a potentially problem, particularly in that part of the road. Now, what happens is, safety is tentative. The day-to-day use is definitive, so I'm saying we have to be careful, and I believe the commission should further restrict the use of that property in order not to create a safety problem. Now, I don't believe, and I address this in my written comments, I don't believe there's anywhere in the rules that safety has to be a criteria for a zoning decision, but I think that's sort of in simple, included in almost every... The last issue is the weight of the community objections. We have seen a lot of very pleasant testimony of the character of the people and the, in that thing, in the property. I think the issue is not character, I think the issue is the land use, and I think the land use is going to lead to safety issues, and I think that's going to be a serious problem.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have that card? Just for a second.
And will ask if comments have already, if points have already been made, if you would restrict your comments to new points? We'd appreciate that.
Chairman, there have been a number of points made. First, my name is Stephen Leonard. I live at 12100 Southwest Fox Ridge Road, McMinnville, and I am the signator on the appeal of the land use ruling by the planning commission. There, to your point about a number of points that have brought up, there's been new information that I've heard today, new positions. There is in your packet from the planning commission, my testimony, the full text of my testimony that I planned to provide to you today. I am going to try to keep it as short as possible, but I think there are important points that we have to recognize. First, and this seems preeminent, given the nature of the proponents' testimony, is that we wandered very quickly off of land use law and started talking about character. There is no dispute about character. This is not a character assassination for the owner of the property or Kerry Laughlin. This is about land use law. And my comments, if you've already read them, try to speak directly to zoning laws. That is not a character issue, that is a law issue. The hearing that the, that the planning commission held on October 6th, a number of the residents commented and objected to the conditional use permit because they did not think that bringing an industrial operation into a residential agricultural neighborhood was in the best decision-making position for our community, and it is, in fact, contrary to the criteria of Sections 1004 and 1202 of our zoning ordinances. That's where we need to stay focused, is on the zoning ordinances. Their complaints included the traffic beyond what normally occurs, including the safety and the noise created by large trucks and trailers loaded with heavy equipment pulling up the hill, the impact on property values, putting an industrial operation into a residential neighborhood, and the lack of compatibility with the neighborhood by virtue of establishing a home occupation without it being a home. I think this is key. It is not a home. It's difficult to achieve a home occupation without home. The decision of the commission is particularly flawed in two distinct areas. First, we start with, Section 1202 dot 02 Bravo requires a conditional use to be consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. The intent of the comprehensive plan is to provide a small, non-intrusive neighborhood business that is subordinate to the operator's residence. This is something that somebody does at their home to make a living, not to live, that isn't the primary purpose. In this case, the business seems to be the primary purpose, with residence becoming secondary, only in order to comply with the home occupation criteria. There are other industrial zones in the area that are far more amenable to excavating companies' operations. In Section 1004, we find two points that we believe the planning commission erred on when deciding to approve the conditional use application. They include 0, correct, 1004 dot 01 Alpha, a home occupation will be operated by a resident of the property, and 1004 dot 01 J prohibiting traffic beyond what normally occurs. Fox Ridge is a residential and agricultural neighborhood. The traffic on the road consists of personal vehicles, service vehicles, and other occasional small agricultural vehicles. The introduction of heavy trucks and trailers on an ongoing basis is inconsistent with the current use and not compliant with the ordinance. The property is zoned as AF-10, due to the zoning change which occurred in 2001 in order to allow residents to exist on the property. There never has been a residence, a legal residence, on the property, as an aside. It is an island among EF-80 and VLDR 2.5 properties. The applicant's statement in the hearing was that far more impactful traffic could result from AF-10 zoning. However, we need to evaluate this traffic in the real context of a residential and agricultural neighborhood. Further, the applicant offered a voluntary limitation on this traffic in his application of a period between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. on weekdays. The planning, the planning commission heard testimony that he wasn't in compliance with that, and in turn, they made the decision not to hold the applicant accountable, but to allow operations at virtually any time of day on any day of the week. The new traffic simply does not comply with the requirement for traffic not in, pardon me, does not normally, traffic that does not normally occur on Fox Ridge Road. Section 1004 dot 01A requires that the home occupation be operated by a resident of the property. There is no residence on this property. I asked the planning department earlier this week if permits had been applied for, and I understand that, to date, there has been no permits applied for, contrary to what I think was inferred in earlier testimony today, that they are applying for residence. Nothing has been applied for, to my knowledge, and the planning department can correct me if I'm wrong. Nevertheless, the planning commission approved the application with the requirement that the operation, the business be operated by a resident and that a dwelling be constructed within one year. It is best premature to approve a home occupation for a property that has no home. The county should not approve an application that does not comply based on a condition that it complies at some future point in time. Secondly, the applicant has stated that he does not intend to live at the property. ORS 215448 states that a home occupation must be operated by a resident or an employee of a resident of the property. The Yamhill County zoning ordinance, 1004 dot 01A noticeably leaves out the language referring to an employee. The suggested premise that an employee of a non-resident operator may fulfill the residency requirement is a misapplication of the ordinance. A business owner of a home occupation who complies with the rule and is resident on the property has interest in the quality and the character of the neighborhood within which they live. In this case, again, the proposed residency is simply a contrivance to achieve home occupancy. I have one other document that I'd like to show you, folks. There was some discussion about the frequency of traffic. We have not logged the traffic as Mr. Laughlin says he has. This is perhaps anecdotal, except for a few cases that I did log, and they were related to times that he operated outside of his voluntary curfew, if you will. If I can give you a copy of these, it shows examples of operations outside of the curfew. He stated that in the last, I think, six or eight weeks, there were only seven operations. Again, perhaps anecdotal, but it sure seemed like more during the summertime. Neither can I state that the excavating business is, is or is not seasonal, but that the operation during the summertime was certainly more than one truck every few days. In summary, there is no overwhelming reason to approve or public benefit that will result from allowing property in a residential and agricultural neighborhood to be used for this purpose. I respectfully request that the commissioners reverse the decision of the planning commission and deny this conditional use application. If the commissioners are not so inclined, then the original recommendations of the planning department should be applied in their entirety, except to modify Items 4 and 7 to stipulate that only the applicant can fulfill the requirement of residency for a home occupation and not an employee or other surrogate. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Just one piece of clarification. You were talking about the timeframes that this is allowed to operate, and that they didn't go with the 7 to 5. Remember your comment on that?
That's correct.
It's actually 7 to 6:30, just so you know. It's on the record here.
That was the approval that the planning commission offered. His initial offering in his application was 7 to 5. The planning commission opened up those times because they found that it was difficult for him to comply with what he had said he would do.
And you would understand that, you know, being in business, I'm assuming, or working for a business, that 7 to 5 is about when, you know, you get off work, if you have to move something back to a location, you head back for the shop, that probably 6:30 is a little more reasonable.
I don't think this is about reasonableness in that context. It was, it was an offering from the applicant to operate between 7 and 5. I did not question whether that was reasonable or not, that was his statement. Therefore, when the planning commission looked at it and says, "Oh, jeez, you can't comply, we'll give you more time," I understand the reasons, I mean, I understand the reasonableness and the business character, but that isn't what he said. That is not what he offered in his application. Neither did the offer Saturdays. The planning commission opened it up to Saturdays because of the inconvenience of not being able to work on Saturdays. The paper that I showed you shows operations on Sundays as well, even after that application was, after the planning commission approved it. I would like to, perhaps...
So, you realize this is a negotiation and process, then? What he started with and what we end up with could be completely different.
It could be a negotiation. I have, if I may, two comments regarding that. Somebody, maybe Commissioner Primavich, talked about discussions between parties. The applicant, in this case, has, to my knowledge, never discussed this with anybody in the neighborhood. He says he would like to be able to wave at us on the way up the street, but it has been a non-communicative relationship entirely. Secondly, the, the small business aspect of this, again, is not in question. Whether he is successful or not, I wish him all the success in the world, but not at the cost of rules. We have zoning rules for those purposes, and because a fellow has a lot of promise in business, doesn't mean that he can use the rules as he pleases.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I get a little clarification, because I'm looking at these pictures?
Sure.
How can I identify that this is actually Kerry's equipment? You indicate one is Randy's excavating, going up there, that was on a Thursday, 3:24. This Sunday, truck towing uphill, you know for certain this was Kerry's truck?
The, the Sunday, 10:30, 2016, next to the last line?
August 28th.
Oh, August 28th.
2:35 p.m.
He says he wasn't here that day.
Let me go, let me go through these briefly. On August 28th, my wife observed several trucks congesting the street in the vicinity. That was disputed, that is the day that Kerry says he was out of town. If I may make a quick aside, if, going back to the operator and residence, if the company can't operate without him, then I suggest that he might be the operator and the person that needs to be in residence. Nevertheless, that item is in dispute. Second item, Randy Cook excavation is on there because there was, I made the point in the first hearing that it wasn't, it didn't seem like it was only Laughlin trucks that might be using the hill with this operation up there. That's why that item is there. The Saturday, ladge truck with trailer and backhoe, that was my observation. I made a note of it to myself on my cellphone and wrote it down later. I observe the logo on his truck. The photo by Steve Ryan, the fourth and last line, the, I have to take Mr. Ryan's word for it, that it was a Laughlin truck. I asked him yesterday, he said, when he sent me these photos, he said they are geostamped and timed, and I said... and timed, and I said, "Well, they don't print that way on my photo." He says, "You know, I didn't think they would get that detailed as to whether I'm telling the truth or not." Well, that's-
I'm just, you, you hand these out as some, I guess, as evidence of non-compliance, and as I'm looking at these, I look at the time, I can't really, there's no way I could tell that these are actually Kerry's, and I'm certain, I don't know if Randy's business is connected to Kerry, but Randy driving up that hill, I'm certain is not a responsibility of Kerry unless he asked him to come up there and bring his rig, but, so-
I, I offer this as examples only for whatever you believe is worth.
Okay, yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify that-
Certainly.
...they really don't indict anybody just off of these.
Commissioner, I have been very, tried to be very careful not to propose untruths and to try to stick to the issues. I, that's all I-
Yeah, and I, I'm not, I'm just saying that to look at these and to make some determination as to whether or not Kerry is staying within those hours, this would be very difficult to use as evidence of that, so, thank you.
Fair statement.
May I at this point ask Mr. Loughlin if, if we could clarify whether or not you are working with other excavating companies using your facility, so we can just get this off the table regarding the Randy Cook?
Senator, Randy and I have worked on projects in the past together, but Randy is not part of there.
No, none of this where you're, he's using your facility or your, so his being up there is, is really-
He's brought a couple loads of rock up to the parking lot and things like that. He created the parking lot around the corner. So it was all-
So he was working on your property?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So a couple, a couple things. You've got to remember, this is a county road, and as long as they abide by the load limits, anybody can drive that road. You're aware of that, of course.
I am aware of that, and, and I have not made an issue of that.
Okay, and then the other thing was, you know, I've heard from Mr. Greenleys and yourself that, you know, you're not taking these guys' character to task, but one of the pieces of testimony that I have, you're asked about the water and light and their access, and they're bringing up heavy trucks on this property, and whether it bothered you, and your answer was that it didn't bother you, that they are not troublesome. They are good people, talking about water and light. And that would indicate to me that maybe you don't have that same attitude towards Mr. Smith and, and Mr. Loughlin. Is that correct?
No, I would disagree. Are you reading?
I'm reading from the minutes.
Minutes of the-
Planning Commission meeting.
Right. Regarding the water and light, those people were there, have been there for a number of years, certainly before I moved in there, I knew they were there, and I knew they would be operating on the road when I moved in. This is a new occurrence. They are good people, I suppose, is a-
They're not troublesome, and they're good people. So that, that just lends me to, to think that maybe your attitude towards the others, you know, artists, I maybe don't know them as well. I'm, I'm not sure.
You know, as I said, I'm not trying to attack the character of Mr. Smith or Mr. Loughlin. By arguing points of zoning law, I don't think that is an attack on character. Neither, and regarding the water and light company, as I said, they have been there a long time, and I did not mean, I do not know them. I've worked with them on a couple of occasions, and they've been very communicative, but perhaps I should not have said that last time because that suggests that I have an attitude that I don't intend to portray.
And so, you know, the other thing that, just in passing, and I'm sure you're aware of this, but that road is, that roadmap's been down for years, and Kerry's, Loughlin's outfit's been there about a year and a half, I'm guessing, and there's been a lot of, that road's in bad shape, just so you know, and I'm, I'm sure you already know, it's, it's been in potential disrepair for a long time. I've been up and down that road for years, up to get our Christmas tree or, you know, whatever the activity that's been on that, on that road. And, and in my opinion, it's not a safe road regardless if the Loughlin's company is there or not, because you get fog up there, you got walkers. You showed me pictures of the narrowness and walkers going up and down, and the fact that there's going to be more. Once they redo Hill Road, they're going to have biking paths, walking paths on Hill Road, and I think that starts sometime in the spring of '17, maybe it's summer. There's going to be more people accessing that area, and I'm going to get into some of that a little bit later, but I just wanted to address that, that this road has been in, you know, we're kind of a fix-it-or-lose-it at this point because it's been so long since it's been overlaid or any attention's given to it. But we do a certain criteria on getting to roads and traffic and accidents and deaths and property damage, brings it up on the criteria, but, but if you hang around, we'll talk about that a little later and bring some clarity to that.
I spoke to John Phelan shortly after the last hearing because one of the commissioners, one of the planning commissioners inferred that the road would be repaired soon, and John told me that it was not on his radar at all.
Okay. Well, John's going to be here at my request.
Okay, good.
He's actually here in the back of the room.
Very good.
He's going to be here at my request, and we're going to discuss that further.
Okay, and yes, the road, I, I guess, and this is perhaps anecdotal, but the neighbors generally have thought that the deterioration of the road has accelerated in the last couple of years, but we all know it's getting to be an old road anyway.
Yeah, it's old. I've been up there, it's been, it's been in bad shape for a long time, and, and from there on up, it's the same way.
Oh, yeah.
It's all consistent. So I don't see any, you know, additional problems with the trips that are made, but that's just me. I'm no engineer.
Neither am I.
Thank you.
That's why I asked the questions that way I did.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you.
Joan Leonard?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner, commissioners for the record, Sid Friedman, on behalf of Friends of Yamhill County Post Office, Fox 1083, McMinville. We have no opinion on whether or not the use proposed by the applicant is appropriate for this area or compatible with the area. We do, however, have a strong opinion on whether or not a home occupation can be approved for a parcel that has no home on it. There is no residence on this property, no legal residence, and the operator of the business does not reside on the property, and that's what's required by the ordinance. I believe this is the issue that resulted in the split vote at the Planning Commission level, and the condition imposed by the Planning Commission requiring construction of a dwelling within one year places the cart squarely in front of the horse, it's the tail wagging the dog. An application that doesn't comply with the most basic approval criteria cannot be approved with the condition that it eventually comply, and for that reason, we urge denial of the application. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. Elizabeth, I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Heller.
Heller.
Good afternoon, thanks for hearing me. My name is Elizabeth Heller, and I live at 13235 Southwest Fox Ridge Road. I've lived in the community since 1983. I've been on Fox Ridge Road since 1998. My daughter and Kerry Loughlin actually used to date in high school, so I know Kerry very well, and I have absolutely nothing negative to say about his character, or his family's character, or Sid's character, and that's not what we're here for. It's not about character of Kerry. In fact, it really has nothing to do with him, other than he's making an application to, to run a business, an industrial, commercial business, and clearly the properties up on Fox Ridge Road are not zoned for that. When you purchase homes, by the way, I'm a real estate agent with Belacosta Real Estate, and I've been in the business for over 20 years. When a person purchases a property, there is an item listed on the sales contract that clearly states that the property is not to be used for anything other than what it has actually been zoned for. This property has not been zoned for commercial or industrial. I want to read you a couple of things about zoning, and then I'm going to be done. Zoning is a restriction on the way the land within its jurisdiction can be used. Through community planning and development, zoning laws help local governmental agencies preserve property values and ensure communities are functional and safe places. Without zoning, a gun store could open up next to a school, an adult club could operate near a playground, a busy store could maintain its business on your residential street. Through zoning restrictions, activities by these establishments are not allowed, and these violators would suffer major consequences for their noncompliance. The property owner must comply with the zoning, local zoning laws. For instance, if the owner owns a house for his residence, he can't raise pet goats, llamas in that area unless it is zoned for that, like the agricultural, agricultural zone. If the property owner wishes to use his land in a way that does not comply with the state requirements of the zoning laws for that piece of property, the owner must be granted an exception, often called a special use permit, by first filing an application with the local board, and listen to this last part of the paragraph, and getting neighborhood approved. I was not able to be present at the last meeting with the Planning Commission, and I was very, very distraught to hear that they went ahead and approved his application. All our neighbors, and the majority of the neighbors were there, they showed their objection, and we were completely, in my mind, not listened to. We are the ones that live on this road. None of you people do. Kerry Loughlin does not live on the road. He has a property in Sheridan. Why doesn't he run his, his business off of his property? Why doesn't he go rent a, a place in an industrial commercially zoned area? I just don't understand why it needs to be on Fox Ridge Road, other than the fact that Sid Smith is being more than generous in letting him, allowing him to be there for rent-free, that I can understand, but at the risk of upsetting all the neighbors. And again, he's a very fine young man. He's never approached me about trying to settle this, or any of the other people I've talked to on Fox Ridge Road. And then the last comment I would like to make, as you, Mr. Springer, you make, on the condition of a road, and that it's going to get busier, so why do we need another company, a, an industrial, commercial person on our road to even make it worse than it already is? That's all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
Liz, can, can I assume then by your comments, you're against zone-changing, period? Is that correct?
At this point in time-
So as a Realtor, you're not going to take on a client that needs a zone change and walk him through the process, then, at the city or the county, is that right?
As I said, the application, if he wants to file an application, I would be behind him, but all the neighbors have to approve. If the neighbors don't approve, then we need to move on, but we would do our due diligence before we purchase that property, to make sure he can do on that property what he wants to do, and that's what I tell my people. You cannot use this property for anything other than what it is zoned for, so please be very clear, before you purchase the property, that you know what the zoning laws in that area, and if it does not meet your criteria, then we need to move on and find you a different property. Thank you.
Thank you. John Kersting?
I live at 12385 Fox Ridge Road. I've been there eight, 20 years next spring. I do appreciate all our friends and neighbors, and the commission listening to the problems that exist, and hopefully, we'll have some resolution today. I'm here again, as I went before the other board previously, on this item for C-13-16. I'm asking this, when the person originally bought the property, why wasn't he made aware of the zoning ordinance, which Realtors always do in reading the paperwork? Because this has been violated four times now with four different tenants. Seems all of us on Fox Ridge were made aware of the rules when we bought our properties, and we tried to, employer, to, to use the rules as, as they do protect all of us. The first letter we received from the Planning Commission specifically said the property was still EF-80, and at the first hearing, I learned it was two properties of AF-10, and I also learned several other things, that the person I thought, or we thought was renting the property, was there, as I learned today, as, as a gift from Mr. Smith. I admire his, his, his warm-heartedness and support of young business. I have no qualms with the man, Mr. Loughlin, for establishing his business now over 10 years. I just, I have to question the judgment of both of them, being business owners and knowing more about business and the world than I would know, that they haven't looked at the paperwork or looked into the situation before they invested their time and effort. So at the last hearing, the current renter was asked if it was his intent to buy well, I'll have to change that word from renter. His answer was yes, if it was for sale, so he was generously given a year to complete this activity, to build a home and buy the property, and at that time, he intended to put one of his workers or the foreman in the property, so he'd have a, a tendency to maintain the property. Since then, I'm not sure that was a law, or how that is finally determined or decided by the board or the Board of Commissioners, but there's a little bit of leeway there, and, and I, I respect and really appreciate what you folks do. Anyway, we were also asked, or I'm asking it this time, has the owner and the progratist person who's using the property entered into any agreement for him to purchase the property, or is that his intent ever? Or do we as homeowners have to wait a year till he makes up his mind, like the board gave him a year to come up with a, a solution to the problem? I've seen nothing formally, or can't find out anything, that this is moving on prior, you know, with conclusion of the planning board. Anyway, also, should this regulation be applied to all of us equally and consistently, as we try to do in our property? It's my humble opinion that this issue hasn't passed around long enough. The property owners and the board should settle it once and for all. It's all my, also my impression that the obligation of the board members are to ensure a segregation of residential and business districts. Now, this was in WikiUp, you know, it's a source for a lot of us, unless they are willing to modify it for each one of us in this case. So if I want to have a business coffee shop there, I guess I could put a U-turn in my driveway and open a coffee shop. Well, anyway, I'm not willing to do this, and what we're trying to do here is just establish the rules of zoning and enforce the rules of zoning. I can understand why, or I can't understand why we try to accommodate various things that are breaking the law, or why the law doesn't apply to all of us equally. And I have no question about the people mentioned earlier, as far as personality and character and all this stuff. It took a lot of time, but I'm sure they felt it was necessary. But I'm impressed by the law. I try not to speed, although I've had a ticket, but I've changed my actions. Now that I think Mr. Loughlin knows he's illegal, and the board knows he's illegal, and Mr. Smith knows he is illegal, and it's contrary to the laws we all try to live by, I just wish that they would be implied by the board today, and I sincerely thank you for your time and the job you do, it's not an easy one.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Do we have any other opponents?
I didn't fill out a card, but may I?
Yes, go ahead. Would you fill one out before you leave?
I will.
Okay, thank you.
My name is-
My name is Ellen Kersting, and I live at one, two, three, eight, five Fox Ridge Road. I just want to point out a few things that I've been observing during this time. I am in full support of the neighbors that I live around. But I want to point out that not one of the people on the other side live on Fox Ridge Road, so they don't realize the peace and the beauty that they're going to be disrupting. I think that even though Commissioner Springer pointed out that the use permit is based on the individual, I do believe that even though it is on an individual, it will be setting a precedent. Someday, Mr. Springer may not want to do that business anymore, or someday he may not, may or may never live on that property. But it'll be setting a precedent for the next industrialized business to come in and invade a residential property area. They also talked about seven trips in sixty days. That can't be guaranteed to stay. It can't be guaranteed that he never will want to grow that business. When I was a child, I wanted to be an astronaut, and then maybe a doctor. I grew up to be a teacher. What he wants today may not be what he wants tomorrow. What he does today is no promise of what he'll do tomorrow. We heard, we sat through the, Mr. Diaz's case earlier. We don't want to be Corona Road. I do believe that many of you might take a moment and think about your neighborhoods and where you live, whether you live rural or city, and how many of you would want to say, "I'm cater cornered to that property." Oh, well, this is the Petersons', and this is the Leonard's'. Oh, and that, that's an industrial excavating company. That devalues where I live. That devalues my property. That devalues my neighborhood. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other opponents? Do we have any rebuttal? I'm, I'm sorry, we're going to, I'm sorry, sir, are you?
That would be a rebuttal.
No, well, we're not, we're not doing that. We're, we're opponents, and now public, no more opponents. Public agency report?
There's no additional public agency.
Okay. Rebuttal by proponent, Mr. Loughlin?
Okay. I do want to bring John up during, during this time, before we get that, if we can.
Public agency.
Oh, public agency. Okay, well, let's go ahead and, well, let's go ahead and let Kerry speak, and then we'll bring John up.
Okay, that's fine.
You had any rebuttal to anything that was said earlier, Mr. Loughlin?
I do. I have pictures here that I'd like to pass around for everybody to see. We have all the vehicles and equipment, so if there was equipment, it is verified in pictures. And there's, I don't recall the name of the road that was spoken of earlier, but I can find the pictures here. You can see of our stop and another train. In the defense of the home not being in there, why would I try to buy a piece of property or think of buying a piece of property, or run my business if I can't? Why would I build a home on a piece of property that I'm going to live on a camera? It wouldn't make sense. That's why we're here, trying to run the business. So if we are approved, we can put a home on it and make this legit.
Thank you.
Would you guys like the mileage? Because I will say there may be some confusion with the trips of trucks. The truck I'm speaking of is the heavy truck that everybody talks about, versus our work pickups, which we have vehicle logs up to, which are the size of a residential crew cab.
And by law, you have to keep a certain amount of logs.
Correct.
For tax purposes. Is that correct?
All our PUCs and our truck plates on it, we have to.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Phelan, would you, would you join us for a moment? We have a couple of questions you might be able to help us with. This is John Phelan, who is our Director of Public Works.
Thank you.
So, oh, go ahead. No, I asked Director Phelan to come today to, to talk a little bit about the situation, because I'm concerned about the safety right now on your road. Whether Loughlin's there or not there, you got a dangerous situation. And you think about that thing around this time of year, through Christmas, cars up and down, it's been foggy. It's an accident looking for a place to happen, that road. It shouldn't even be walked on. We should put signs up, "You can't walk on this road," honestly. But we're not going to do that, I don't believe. And so I was brainstorming with the director in trying to deal with this issue, and I, I think it would be appropriate, this is just my thought, we have one percent of our budget that is to, to go to bike paths, walking paths, those kind of things, and that's what we're to spend those on. And I'm thinking with the, the city's acquisition of Hill Road and their plans to, to improve Hill Road, that it would be appropriate for us to go ahead and lay another mat over this road, but at the same time, use some of that one percent money we have and put that walking path in there. So we have a designated area for people to get up and down that hill safely. We have the funds to do it. That road is, in talking to John, and he can elaborate on this, but we're at a point now that you either fix it, or it gets to the point where we're going to lose the road. We certainly don't want to do that, and I just thought it might be a good time to approach, you know, laying a two-inch or whatever you, would even lay a, an overlay, and also, at the same time, put that bike and, and walking path in. So that's why I asked John to come.
And Commissioner, you're right, that road has, for the most part, it's, we've got our use out of that. The road at the bottom is twenty-one feet wide, but a half mile up, it does choke down to a nineteen-foot wide oil mat, not a asphaltic road. And that's where the one, in the testimony, you heard that the cracking and whatnot. And we've talked about the oil mats, so I won't go into that. With what is going on in connection with the Hill Road realignment, there's actually a realignment on Fox Ridge, but not too critical, it's not too severe. Basically, their approach ends up just about where it is now, just changes its entry point onto Hill Road. Yes, we would propose to, now originally, when we had talked about this, we were looking at completion date, and I think someone in your testimony did say, and maybe it was you, Commissioner, the city's plans are to start Hill Road next year, 2017.
Spring, spring of seventeen, or is it later than that?
Well, they're hoping for construction summer of seventeen. Construction would carry through, obviously, to eighteen, for completion of eighteen. You know, and if I can step back, just so for the record, what I would do is I would submit that forward project, and as the commissioners know, what I would do is put my list together before the end of the year, is typically the way it is done. I submit that list to a road improvement advisory group. Ultimately, it ends up in the commissioners' hearing. The decision is made by the commissioners to do these projects. I would propose that we would do a minimum of a two-inch overlay on the first half-mile, probably a three-inch overlay on the, the north half-mile, just because it is in severe shape. With that, I would propose to, as you, as you spoke to, to widen the road. Now, there is some issues. There's one choke place that I do think that we would be able to, with retaining, to be able to achieve a twenty-four-foot road. Essentially, that'd be a twenty-foot driving lane. That's about what they've got on the good part, on the south end right now, with a four-foot bike pedestrian path that would be on one side of the roadway, is what I will propose.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Mr. Phelan, can we talk a little bit about, because we've gotten some pictures that show the breakdown of the asphalt and, and what that looks like? And we've also, we've heard that Mr. Loughlin's been there a little over a year, driving a little over a year. So typically, how long are we looking at before you start to see that kind of breakdown on a road?
Well, that road has been broke down way before Mr. Loughlin's trucks or any other vehicles for the last year. I would suspect ten years ago, it's on that upper portion, the north section, probably a lot similar to what it is, does today. Cracking doesn't necessarily mean the load that it is carrying. It's a flexible, asphalt is flex, supposed to be flexible pavement. As that, the hydrocarbons evaporate, or the sun bleaches it out, it becomes a lot more, the flexibility goes out of it, and that's, that's what's causing most of that. The roads, the road itself has a very good base on it. If you drive the road, there's very few imperfections as far as potholes or swales in the road, which would hold the standard. I think there's a quarry right there, so it's probably a fairly stable ridge to build a road on.
Just, just regarding the, the safety of the road in general, we talked about, we heard about walkers, people recreating on the road. How would you compare this to other roads in the county where people are walking and there's, and you've got issues where you've got trucks and, and large vehicles?
Oh, Commissioner, we have roads, as you know, that have five or six thousand cars a day on it, that we have bikers and walkers on it. Fox Ridge, I was not able to get you an ADA, average daily traffic on it. Our records actually indicate that there's two hundred, and I suspect that those are wrong. That seems like quite a lot more cars than would utilize that road in a day. I can't get you that information, and I apologize for not having it. In answer to your question, if I was a walker or a biker right now, I would choose to go, which I don't do either, by the way.
But you're going to start the first year, aren't you, John? That's your resolution?
No, he bought a treadmill.
He bought a treadmill. Hang his clothes on.
It's a very, very scenic byway up there. Slow traffic, minimal traffic, even in the road condition today. I would choose that to walk on, again, if I wasn't a walker. With the improvements to Hill Road, I think Commissioner Springer alluded to it, there is going to be a six-foot bike lane that goes down the total length of Hill Road from Second to Baker Creek. And then Baker Creek actually has a six-foot path on it, as it goes now, so it, it will, with the improvements to Hill Road, and if we're willing to make the improvements, it will become a very active place that people will want to walk, just because of the views and being out into the countryside.
You're having a hard time saying that, John.
John, you, you said you don't have that traffic comp, but you will be getting it. When were you planning on putting it on the MIP for seventeen or eighteen?
Well, Commissioner, that's a good question. Actually, originally, I was slated that for after the completion of the Hill Road section. With your approval, I would put it on the 2017 MIP list that you'll be receiving, probably before the end of the year. A lot of that is just because of the city's project. Completion in 2018 is going to be a large hurdle for them. They're only at, excuse me again, they're only at sixty, sixty percent of the plan right now, so to get a hundred percent of the plan, and it bid, and construction started, I think it's going to be a, a large chore for them to do. So I would propose that we pave it down to the existing Hill Road, and then we would coordinate with the city as far as where to stop and where to start.
Excuse me, could we, could we respect the person who's speaking at this time? Thank you very much.
So in answer to your question, I would propose, I would like to see it built next year, and then matched in the Hill Road.
Thank you, John.
And with the, you know, the pictures we have, the, the letters from the opponents, almost every one of them makes an issue, and I think rightfully so, that this is a safety problem today. I would hate to delay this another year and have somebody hit by an SUV or a car, you know, coming off that road. And it seems like, you know, it's a consistent argument. The pictures back that up, that we've been provided, walkers, narrow, and, so I think it's imperative that we are diligent about something up there to, to protect the citizens and the walkers.
That is, with that one percent that you, that is for the bike pit development, I mean, this is probably a picture-perfect place to utilize those funds.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Anybody else?
No. Thank you, John.
Okay. I'd like to ask staff for some questions, or should we wait for after recommendation?
We might cover them in the recommendation, so this way they'll have to recommend.
All righty, well.
I would like to clarify something came in a couple of different statements. One was mention of the state law on home occupation, and that in county ordinance, there was an omission of the requirement for the home, the property owner to be the resident. And I just wanted to clarify, so that there's no question. If I'm hearing correctly, then it would mean that Kerry could, in fact, operate a home occupation on that property and not be the owner and not be living there. Is that accurate for our county ordinance? And then the, the other, only other issue then would be the one that Sid raised concerning the issue, granting the conditional use without having the actual capability of fulfilling that. But I, I did want to clarify that, so that, because I know Sid mentioned, Sid was mentioning state law, and I wanted to make certain that there was clarification between that and our county ordinance, so, thank you.
Well, actually, Mr. Friedman was mentioning county law, but it talks about the resident, not an employee of the property.
Well, we, we have allowed operators to have someone that is their agent, you know, live in the dwelling and operate it. And after the last planning commission hearing, we checked to see that we were on firm ground as far as the land use part of the field, and, and there were a few decisions that, that allowed that. As far as our code being more restrictive, you know, the MLK kinda has a long and storied history of trying not to be any more restrictive than state law. And so we interpret that, when it says it can be operated by a resident of the property, that that doesn't necessarily mean it has to be the owner who's operated, but someone has to reside on the property to operate the home occupation.
Well, that speaks to the opponent's concerns about this being kind of a revolving door of someone who's here today, gone tomorrow, but it, this does follow, this is a personal, this is attached personally, this is not to the property.
That's correct.
Particular to the property.
And as far, as far as the dwelling, five years ago, about five years ago, we had an application from Dr. Gibson to establish a bed and breakfast on his property, and he, he, you know, admitted if he didn't get the bed and breakfast approval, he was going to build a different type of dwelling, and he was issued an approval without the dwelling actually being there on the property. And I, I think you can place a condition of approval down, and the planning commission, you know, seemed to agree with it, that, that they establish a dwelling on the property prior to the final approval, so.
So then you're saying that you're, this is your story, and you're sticking to it as far as, as an employee, as an employee being able to occupy the residence?
Yes. That, that employee can be the manager of the, the business, because we want someone there who is part of that operation, so that there are problems on, on the property, that they'll be able to deal with that, and that they reside on the property.
I have one more question, and this is regarding this two fifteen, three eleven? And this has to do with log truck parking and exclusive farm use, dump truck parking in forest zones, or mixed farm and forest zones. Can you clarify that a little bit?
Yeah, it, this is actually, the reason I pass that out is partly that when we look, we look at the surrounding area and the appropriateness in the surrounding area, and really, all of the properties surrounding this parcel allows basically parking of large vehicles like this. The property to the south, north and east, excuse me, west, is a zone for exclusive farm use, and the property to the east is a zone for public work safety, and that, that allows basically a yard to, to park large vehicles in. a yard to park large vehicles in. And so, I pass that out, it does not directly deal with this property. This is an ag forestry zone, but it's not an ag forestry zone that's under ORS 215. But I wanted to kind of demonstrate that, you know, it's easily a misunderstanding on the part of the applicant that maybe he thought he could park his vehicles there, because frankly, every property next to it, you could park a large vehicle there without getting the home occupation approval.
Thank you.
The other question I have is on the zoning, if this is in fact an industrial business, how does, how do we then, without going through a zoning change, allow that usage in this particular instance?
Yeah, you know, I, actually, I was part of some of the comments I was going to make at the end, but, you know, I've heard this referred to as industrial use, and we really don't think of it as an industrial use. Yeah, certainly, these pieces of equipment can be used for industrial uses, but he's not manufacturing the equipment there, he's just storing it there. I've got, you know, a couple of kids in college, and they come home and park their cars in my driveway, and that doesn't make it a, you know, a car sales lot, it just happens to be that they're there. And in this case, you know, he's got two pieces of, two dump trucks and two standard trucks that he's parking on the property. We don't view that as an industrial use.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for me the distinction. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we have staff recommendation?
The staff recommends approval of the request with those 12 conditions that were listed in the planning commission decision letter.
Okay. All right, well, then let's close the hearing and begin deliberation. Do we have a, do we have a motion?
I have a motion, Madam Chair. I move that we deny the appeal in this matter and approve the application by Mr. Loughlin for the home occupation with conditions recommended by staff. And I will note that both the planning commission voted favorably and our planning staff have recommended this, so I want to follow suit in that.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Springer. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, from the point of approval, we have a one-year moratorium, if you will, where he has one year to complete all of the conditions, or this approval goes away, and he must cease operation at that time, is that is what I understand? So an approval today gives him one year from this, from the date that it's finalized, which will probably be in a couple, three weeks. Then he has one year to have a home, permitted home on the property, and can continue to park his equipment there. That home not being there and not being, somebody not residing in it in that year's time would then make all of this null and void, is that what I understand? Thank you.
I just want to, my initial thoughts, I am very sensitive to this because I live in a rural area where this is almost identical to a situation that I have lived with for a number of years. And I was, I was looking at the cracked asphalt, and I was looking at the concerns about people walking on the road, and with the unsightliness of heavy equipment, and just the noise and disruption to, to a rural way of life. And my initial, my initial reaction was, at the beginning of this, in reading all the opponent's information, was that I, I get it, and I got so many of the points that you raised. But what's changed my mind is the, this distinction that you could have seven log trucks, and you could have dump truck parking, and when I look at that and I compare that to agricultural equipment, that you are allowed to park in this, it's not inconsistent with AF-10. To me, what this says is seven dump trucks and up to seven trailers allowed on land that is owned for this particular, so, so to me, I didn't see a distinction, and calling it industrial, as Mr. Friday pointed out, when it really is pretty much quite similar to a farm use equipment that you would see, or the number of, you know, a number of trucks that you would see in a farm use. The other thing was that this is not visible, that according to what we've been told, that this equipment is not visible from the road. That was another thing. The other was that water storage is right adjacent to this property, and that it's behind locked gates. The other thing that changed my mind was that there had been the seven times in 60 days, and that the traffic was relatively constrained. Now, one question that was brought up was how do you keep it like this? How do you guarantee that this is not going to become an enterprise where you've got more trips, more trucks, more employees, that type of thing? And that is kind of where I'm, I'm concerned, because it's like you're, everyone who's living rurally is at the mercy of perhaps how this operation could change, and that's kind of where I'm at.
Well, they're limited, you know, to employees, right?
Right, limited to five, and Mr. Loughlin has said he's not interested in that, but I also can understand the neighbors saying, wait a second, you know, this is where we're at today. How do we, how do we, how do we, what's our, what's our guarantee here? So I don't know whether there's another, is there another condition? I mean, we've got the number of employees down to five, but how do we make sure that there's not increased traffic, which could make, you know, life out there, you know, even, even, you know, more objectionable to the opponents?
And I realize this doesn't directly go to the traffic or the trips, but we do have a condition number 10 that talks about a review of the home occupation may be required two years following the date of final approval. The operation may be renewed if it continues to comply with the requirements of section of this code and the conditions of approval.
So two years is a long time to live with a situation that you might find unpalatable. I'm wondering if there would be any appetite on the part of the board to change that to a year?
You could also change the condition that limits the employees to five, you could change it to less, if you wanted to do that, to three or four employees.
I don't know that I'm so concerned about the number of employees as I am about, you know, how do we, how do we review this, should there be concerns, without waiting two years?
And if we did have, let's say that he started to operate on Sunday, that's, that would be outside of the condition number nine, and we wouldn't respond to complaints within that year. It doesn't mean that we don't respond to complaints, just that we would be able to review it at two years or at one year, whenever the board would like.
Well, with the conditions in place, I'm fine with the two-year, because there's courses of action that have been put in by our planning department to keep this thing fenced in and appropriate. And we have code enforcement, I mean, we have all the tools in place.
Well, we have code enforcement. What we've seen earlier, that code enforcement can take a really long time when you're dealing with nuisance situation, I'm not comparing you to Crono Road, obviously, because to me, this is another example of economic development that we are all so passionate about, and I would, I would, you know, hate to put any more constraints on your ability to make a living, which is really what we're all about. But I also know code enforcement does kind of drag on.
Well, you have to go through the steps, but five people, I mean, I've ran crews, five people is not a lot of people.
No, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't.
And they're at five now.
They're at three now.
Five.
Well, but they're at five, a cap.
The cap is five.
A cap, but they're at three employees currently, including yourself, so.
Would you guys compromise with 18 months, so we can get on with this?
I wouldn't go any lower than 22.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that if there is an issue, we don't, we don't, you know.
I'd be fine with a one-year review, because we're going to be going back in one year, but then after that one-year review, I'd want it to kick into two years. The one-year review, we're going to be going back, we're going to be looking at the dwelling, make sure all this criteria was met, and then we can assess the situation. And then from there, you know, whether we have two years or five or whatever it is, then I think we should go back to standard operating procedure.
You have a comment?
So I would amend my motion, if I can find it.
I think you need this.
To reflect the, the conditions that are recommended by staff and a one-year revisit of progress, right?
You'd be amending condition 10 to require reviewed one year following the date of final approval, and then two years, and we can come up with a length.
And so that, that revision relates to condition 10, page two, on the planning department's.
And then every two years after that.
And then we would also make that subject to staff preparing written findings and a board order for adoption on September 15?
December.
December 15th or the 22nd? Would you rather it be December 22nd?
We have a combined session on the 20th, so I could have it done by then.
December 20th?
If you adopt that motion.
And then also, just a reminder then, this is complaint-driven, as Mr. Friday pointed out, and when there is an issue, I know the planning department is very responsive to these types of things, and a lot of things that, if you bring the, bring it to the attention of the planning department, it can be addressed. So I think we would just be vigilant that way and allow Mr. Loughlin to, to run his business, but not unduly inconvenience the neighbors. So at this time, we'll vote on the motion as amended by Commissioner Springer. And so all those in favor of denying the appeal and approving the application by Mr. Loughlin for home occupation with the conditions recommended by staff and amended, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes unanimously. Well, thank you all for coming. I know it's not the outcome that a lot of people wanted, but I think it's to the letter of the law. So at this time, we'll close the formal session at the Enzo County Board of Commissioners, it's 2:05.
My boy, it's a good team, you know, 2:30. And I thought I could be with you.
I know, and I have a three o'clock, I just chanced with Derek Warf, because I didn't think you were.
Staff recommendations? Because I heard somebody say staff report.
Well, kids.
It's always fun.
Sometimes it's more fun.
Staff recommendations are approved?
The planning commission, yeah, the planning commission's conditions were approved.
Thanks, Michaela. Thanks for lending Mr. Dad today. You needed someone to play for us. Oh, yes. Yes, yes, yes. Maybe he was, maybe he was very discerning about that Knobstark joke. He's right. We're like, yeah, what the heck? Yeah, because the two of us, thanks, if you didn't listen to us.
I understand that, yeah. I get, I get.
I think it would have been good. It was at my expense, my fee.
Oh, it would, oh, it was? Oh, see, now that's, I would have insisted.
No, recommended by staff, is all he said.
Yeah, with the conditions recommended by staff.
At one point, somebody referred to staff report, that's why I.
Well, we were, our recommendation was to the planning commission.
I should have clarified, but you'll see it in the written.
If you want to, you would need to appeal it within the latest 20 days to the land's residents.
I hear a claim filed by the county. It suggests to me, or at least I don't follow them, that there was a question as to whether the county, the county did not allow boys. And then there's 20 days beyond that. So the county ordinance says you must.